First, we need the approval of the agenda. The only ask that I would have is that if we can move open forum to after SBT and McCown Gordon give their update. If anybody here's got questions, hopefully they get answered during their presentation.
Hold up. We can take off my executive sessions, B, C, and D. On twenty-five, one fifteen, and then twenty-five, one sixteen, B and C.
Okay, so do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Which is remove the executive session and?
B, C, and D, and to move the open forum to after twenty-five, dash, one, one, two. And remind me, remind you also that if you do want to speak in open forum, there is a sign up sheet.
I'll move that we remove the executive session A, B, and C, and D, twenty-five, dash, one, one, five, and twenty-five, dash, one, one, six, and move twenty-five, one, one, nine, to what we got on the B?
Which one were you talking about, the one twelve or the?
One twelve, so it'd be after.
So it'd be one twelve, A.
One twelve, A.
That's how we're done it. Oh, one twelve, B, okay, yes.
Yeah, exactly. Two, one, twelve, twenty-five, dash, one, one, two, B.
Is that with approval of the agenda, or do we just need to amend it first? All right. Matt made a motion. Amber seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed? Motion carries. So now we will go ahead and get started. Next is the consent agenda. Versus anybody have any questions about approving the minutes? From the previous meetings. If not, are there any questions on payment of claims? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make that motion. You gotta watch me, how's that? I know that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, Tim made the motion. Amber second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now we will move on to the audit. I believe, do we have somebody here from Adams Brown Strategic Allies? Oh, they're online? Okay.
Yes, can you hear me all right?
We can.
Perfect. My name is Jamie Beneshek. I also have Linnae Garvert on the call, and we are going to go over your audit report tonight. So I'm gonna share my screen real quick. Okay, you can let me know when you can see the audit report.
I can see it.
All right, well, this here is on page one. This is the independent auditor's report. We actually have two paragraphs here I have highlighted. The first one says adverse opinion on U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. We issue an adverse opinion, meaning we, we don't issue an opinion, because the school district does not use U.S. generally accepted accounting principles for their audit report. They instead use the regulatory basis of accounting, and so for that, we have issued an unmodified opinion. And this essentially means that in our opinion, your financial statements are materially correct. So that is the best type of opinion that we can issue, and it is what you would hope to see in your audit report. Moving on to page four. This is the summary statement of receipts, expenditures, and unencumbered cash. And so it, it is a summary of the year. You start with your beginning unencumbered cash on the left-hand side, and then your receipts and expenditures, and end up with your ending unencumbered cash of five million, eight ninety-six. So remember, this is as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, so we, the, the numbers are a little bit dated at this point, but you will see there's a little bit here of a prior period adjustment. This is just basically a reclassification. We did some cleanup work this year, and just reclassified between district activity funds and agency funds, and so it, it's basically just moving it from one schedule to a different schedule, so nothing to be concerned with there. There are two funds here that you'll see have negative balances. Typically, for your unencumbered cash balances, you would want every single fund to have a positive balance or zero. In this case, the SR three fund has a negative ending unencumbered cash balance, and then the Capital Project Fund had a negative balance. That is perfectly fine for those two funds. They have exceptions, so the SR three fund, the expenditures were spent, and then the reimbursement comes in later. And then the Capital Project Fund is the same way. The expenditures were spent, and then you will be reimbursed. Well, you probably already have been reimbursed for that. So that's perfectly fine for those to be negative unencumbered cash. Page five starts the notes to the financial statements. These are required for us to include in your audit to supplement the financial statements that we just looked at. They will look very similar to last year, but there are a couple of notes that I did want to point out. And they are on page twelve. So note number fourteen talks about subsequent events. So obviously, after June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, you had a large bond issuance, and so we have that listed here as a subsequent event. We also note in note fifteen contingencies. So essentially, what this is saying is you had a large outstanding unknown amount of insurance proceeds still coming in. That amount could change depending on, on the claim, if there were any additional claims, et cetera. And so again, that is just detailed in that note. And then the prior period adjustment that I talked about, just a reclassification between the activity funds and the agency funds. On page fourteen, this is a summary of expenditures for the actual expenditures versus what you had budgeted. And so in the far right column, you would want that number to be zero or negative. If it was positive, that means you went over budget, and that would be a violation. As you can see, they're all negative, and, and so there's no violations there. The rest of the audit report is each individual fund statement, starting with the general fund on page fifteen, and then going on into the supplemental general fund, capital outlay, et cetera. On page thirty-eight, you'll see the Capital Project Insurance Fund, and then the following page is the Capital Project Bond Fund. And so Eric and Emily were able to help us get those separated out into separate funds, and these, you know, you just see one line item, and so they would have the detail of that. But again, as we, as I mentioned, this audit report is June thirtieth, and so the, the reports that you all get on a monthly basis are going to be way more up to date than these numbers, so. The last item I had is what we refer to as the governance letter. It's a separate letter from the audit report. On page three of this letter, we have one audit recommendation. Recommend reviewing the state's dormancy periods to ensure outstanding checks are turned over to unclaimed property. And so the state treasurer has a list out on their website of if a check is two years old, three years old, five years old, whatever the case may be, you can turn it over to the state treasurer as unclaimed property, and so then that gets it off the school district's books, and you don't have to worry about trying to get the person to cash that check, or, or whatever it is, that they can just go to the state treasurer to get that money claimed, so. Recommended to review that. And then down below, under internal controls, this is where we would have a material weakness noted, and Rollins County School District does not have proper segregation of duties. There's just not enough people in your office to truly be able to segregate duties. And so we ask that you, as the board, remain involved in the financials, and you ask questions, you approve bills, et cetera. And so you act as, you know, a second, third, fourth set of eyes to help catch any errors that might come through, and so that one is, that, that finding is always in your audit report, so that shouldn't be a surprise. And then the last finding we have here is encumbrances of the district need to be properly recorded. So an encumbrance is anything that you, as the board, have approved, but you don't have an invoice, or maybe you haven't even ordered the item. In this case, it, it happened because of all of the projects you have going on with, with the new build and everything, and so this is pretty typical when we have school districts that issue bonds or have big projects. Sometimes they just don't realize that as you approve the, the vendors that come through, and you go out for bid, and you approve those, as soon as you approve them, they are considered an encumbrance and should have a purchase order created for them. So that's what this was. We were able to get that corrected, and so again, your financial statements are materially correct, and so this is just something to, to look out for going forward. And that is the audit report in a nutshell. Are there any questions?
All good, looks like. Thanks, Jamie.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So we do need to approve the audit. Is there a motion to accept the audit as presented?
I move that we accept the, um, accept the approval of the audit as presented.
We will go ahead and get the audit report filed with the state, and then they typically send you a filing fee for that, so you, I think they email that to you, but we'll get it done. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, so Amber had motion. Tim second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Megan still on?
Yeah, mine was nigh.
Okay. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on. We will go to SBT Architecture and McCown Gordon for an update on the building. I know you guys worked pretty intense the last, since the last time we've seen you, so let's know what we got.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Well, I know there's been a lot of conversation about where we're at with the project. Just an overview, last time we were here in January, not everything was spit out yet. All the bids were received as of February fourth. Still working on some numbers and getting these things back. And I know there's been a conversation about, you know, where are we at with the budget, and just, as we, just to kind of quickly help everybody out here a little bit, we do have a path to get the project under budget and moving forward that doesn't, in our opinion, take up anything that was promised to the voters. We're gonna show that tonight, and there's a lot of different moving parts here yet. Our goal at the end of this is to get the GMP number two approved that allows us to move forward in a way that contractors won't be able to be on site until April. So none of the things that we have, that we're going to bring up tonight have to be decided tonight. It's just the path to move forward that we need kind of agreement on, and that we're able to get these guys signed up to move forward.
Yeah. Thanks, Greg. So within your packets, we've got just a couple of slides here, and, and as Greg mentioned, we did receive bids on the final bid package, which was the balance of construction. That, now that we have kind of a handle on how that went, and the bidding results, as Greg mentioned, we are, the, the project is over budget. So our last few weeks have been working to react to that, and come up with a feasible path for it. So we've got a couple documents here, and I, Eric, I don't know if you want to share the?
Yeah, I'm getting it.
Apologize. So, you know, big, big picture, the, the net of all the bids did come in about six million dollars over budget, which is disappointing. Obviously, we're hoping that we're going to have a little bit better bid results from those, but given the climate in the bidding world right now, is, those, those overages do happen. But what I do want to give the board confidence in is that McCown and SBT have been working together, you know, continuously to, to make sure that we have the bids accurately reflected. We've got the right scope, we've got the right contractors, and we have identified that path forward that includes some various levels of, of reductions. We're gonna go through that here in just a minute, but one of the things that we have been able to do here is, is at least reach out to the low bidders that were provided bids back in December for earthwork, concrete, and then in the, the third bid package, which was steel, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and utilities. And we've been able to work with those folks to, to come up with some creative ideas. We are, we are at a bit of a crossroads here, and this is why we're bringing forward GMP number two to the group, because some of those bidders have been sitting out there for sixty days, and we are getting to a point where those bids are, are expiring, and the contractors are looking to move forward on to, to take on other work. So part of that mitigation strategy here again is to avoid any price increases, and we're gonna go through that kind of in detail as we get towards the end of this, but big picture here is, that's the, that's the reason that we're here tonight, to ask for a guaranteed maximum price number two, is to, to lock in those contractors, write contracts to them, and get them at the table so that we can continue to leverage their expertise for cost reduction measures, as well as lock in that price, so we don't have, we don't risk having to go to a number two bidder, which is higher than what our current budget is as it stands today. So without any further action there, we'll, we'll jump in, and Eric was talking faster. I'm down on slide number four. To talk, to, to review the overall master budget, and then we've got two different paths forward here, and Greg and I are gonna tag team these with these options. So just to kind of set this up. Projects being over budget is not uncommon, and it's important to understand that this is not a foreign or unique situation. The, the situation of it being six million dollars is, is obviously higher than what we would anticipate it being, and, but the good news is, is that the, the path to get there has been productive. We have, we, we will likely be making some difficult decisions, but by and large, we've, we've been able to do this fairly quickly and fairly easily, which is positive news. The cost option sheets that I think most of the board has, it looks something like this, and we're able to review that a little bit more in detail. I, I want to set this up and, and explain the numbers that are included on this cost option sheet. There are some of the prices that are included. There are some of the prices that are included in there that are firm fixed prices that we've received bid alternates from contractors. Others are, we've gotten unit prices from them and we've been able to kind of extrapolate what that looks like based on some quantities. Other ones are educated guesses. And guesses may be a, a little bit of a strong word or lackadaisical word, but it's, in, in reality, it is, we're using historical data and we're using the information we've gotten from the bidders to really understand what that could be. And then there's some next steps that'll have to be taken to be able to firm those numbers up to get us to a, a point where we can incorporate these into the contract. So. And yeah, so the approach with this is, you know, we don't want, the, the worst thing that we can do is provide a cost option here that is $25,000 to reduce the cost. And when we finally get the bids back in and get the subcontractors to reprice it, it comes back at 5,000 bucks, which is totally counterproductive, right? So now we've got to go find another $20,000 cost option to, to try and offset that. So we've approached this in a, in a somewhat conservative number. So kind of keep that in mind. This document is already not completely obsolete, but there is some updates that need to be made to it. We've already squeezed out another $200,000 in addition to what you're seeing here just in, in the six hours that I've been sitting here in that with. So without any further ado, we'll, we'll kind of run through this. Bear with us. I know it's tedious. I know there's going to be a lot of technical information that we're going to go through. So please stop, ask questions if you don't understand something and we're going to, you know, we'll do our best to explain it here kind of quickly.
And we do have Kevin online at the office that he can bring up some floor plans that can show a couple of different options we're talking about too. Are you going to go through the master first?
Do you want to pull up the master budget, Eric, and give everybody a snapshot of where we're at? So the, the master budget is a tool that we use to make sure that we have really all the project costs associated with building a building that are not just part of the construction cost. So this document aligns, you know, what is McCown, McCown's responsibility and the cost for those? What is Greg's responsibility or SBT's responsibility and the cost for those? As well as other things like bringing in new power, new gas, putting in new desks, putting in cabling for all the technology systems. And then we use that to marry that up with the available funds on the project. And the, the idea is that those two numbers equal. So it's like a checkbook, right? Is that they balance, you have expenditures match the budget that is funds available. So in this particular case, we've, we've reconciled that, this column on the far right that long dated 214. The top line is the current bids that we've received from all the contractors. And then throughout that, we've had a few items that were within our, we were originally carrying on the master budget that are now included in the construction cost. So there's some changes in there. That's really generally what's happening. Some other changes where it's, we had part of that scope that was included. We still need to close the gap on some of that other scope, like the existing locker, east locker rooms and that existing gym. We, that scope was not defined yet, but we know that something needs to happen in there. So we're, we're recommending carrying some cost for that to account for the work that'll take place there. Kind of as we worked our way down through this, the, you know, the bottom line there, the escalation in tariff allowance. We've, you know, obviously this has been all over the news, but this is still evolving. So there's been some tariffs that have been enacted in early February. Those have been put on hold until early March. In addition to that, there's some additional tariffs on steel and aluminum that are coming into effect in March. This is all a moving target. So we, we don't have a clear understanding of what is going to be impacted, how much of that is going to be impacted, and ultimately what does that mean from a cost impact? But what we do know is we need to account for something here and we're going to continue to get smarter on that here over the next 30 days as we understand when the tariffs actually being enacted and, and what's ultimately going to be impacting our project. So those are all costs that are, at the end of the day, will likely be included in the construction costs under McCown Gordon's umbrella. And then the next section down that we're classifying as master budget items are.
Also, in that construction cost, remember, there is a million dollars of construction contingency. And that'll be an important part of the conversation moving forward. Obviously, you have, you need some contingency to start out with. And, but we just wanted to make sure everybody understood that we're not going in here, you know, that tight, that we don't have any contingency.
Okay. The master budget is, as we're headed, is where we're accounting for things that are outside of the construction cost. Seats, chairs, cabling, TVs, whatever else it takes to include, you know, to make a building whole and livable. Additionally, we're tracking the design costs. We have utility company fees. This would be a cost to bring in the primary power and the transformer from Midwest Energy as well as the gas service, bringing it back into the building. And then finally, there is a, there's existing hazardous materials in the existing gym area and that classroom part of the, kind of the west side of that existing building that will be removed to make way for new construction. This is held and that contract will be held directly with the school district there, but we're accounting for that cost here. So as we go down to that total estimated cost, this is the construction plus master. This is where we start to rectify between how, what are the available funds versus what is the expenses? And as you can see, the very kind of bottom line, $40,240,000, that is the available funds. Compare that with the 46 million that is going to take, you know, is, at the current bids is what's going to be the delta that we have to close. That equates to about that $6 million. So through our process, to work to get the project back into budget, we have gone through a, we, we call it a cost option exercise, cost reduction exercise that's identified over $6 million, really at this point at $6.3 million in, in cost savings options. And that's what we're getting ready to go through here next. But just wanted to give, give this group a picture of where are we at from a total project standpoint? How did we get there? And what are we doing to rectify that?
And two other pieces of this, you see the FFNE at that top line, right there, it's reduced to $500,000. We felt that was okay to do because you also have about, what, $800,000?
Probably closer to $700,000.
$700,000 should be getting from insurance money. So that budget is more like 1.2 million. And then there's also money that the school district receives from interest money from when the bonds are sold. You invest those and, and you get interest from those and, and that should be somewhere plus or minus a million dollars as well. It's not showing up anywhere in these funds. It could be a little less than that, it could be a little more than that. It's kind of how that is determined, but that's not included in this.
The 40 million, does that include portions of interest or anything else?
So let's roll down to the bottom section of this.
Well, from the, um, from the insurance money that we already have.
Sure. But what was presented, what was voted on was 39, the total project was 39, what?
39.4.
39.4 million. So by definition, what was voted on, we are over. There is available funds, I get that, but we are, I guess the way I view it is that we are over more. Then that's what the budget should have been originally. That's what it should have been based off of. Not 40 million or not plus all of that.
I mean, yeah, that's one way to look at it. The other way to look at it is you can't spend these funds on anything else except for this project. There are some exceptions, like Willie said with the football field, but.
I just want to be clear on what we're over, what we're actually over.
Yeah, you can say that.
Yeah. So this, this bottom section here is the accounting of how did we arrive at the $40 million? And this was reviewed with part of the school board as well as the administration to come up with these numbers. So I'm going to talk about it. It might be a little inappropriate for me to talk about it because I'm not a representative of the school, but this is my understanding of how that was, how this has been arrived at. So the $31 million is the sale of the bonds. The $8.4 million is the funds that were distributed and will be distributed from the insurance company for the fire, for the damage bill. 320,000 of this, and this is kind of coincidental that these next two are close together, but that's not on accident, was donation funds. And I think this is through the Buff Strong.
Yeah, that's through the Buffalo Strong account.
Buffalo Strong account.
That's where we're at, probably in early January with it.
Yep. And then the next 320 is the certificate of deposit interest and.
That's what we've earned through October of last year. The, the insurance proceeds are, they're in the, they're in the CD right now gaining interest. I, I will, kind of a caveat to that is we have depreciation on it. So we received 7.2 million, thereabouts, with the last October. Once we've incurred a contract for that amount of money, then that's where we get the remaining. It's just like when you do, like you replace your roof on your house, insurance has a depreciation on it. It's a very, very similar type of, type of thing. What is the difference on it is, and I haven't had to go through this myself with a new roof or anything, but from my understanding, the depreciation is paid out once you've done the work. The insurance company has told us that they will allow us as soon as we've done the contracts for the work.
So what's not included in this is additional interest on the avail, you know, the bonds that are currently in a bank account. We're not accounting for that, but.
Or the, or the additional from the insurance.
Additional insurance money. And, and I, I can't speak to how much that would be, but this is how, this is the accounting of how we arrived at that 40 million, 240,000 bucks.
And that 6.1 million of the options, what she says is now close to 6.3, I mean, that still can change too, right? You're still getting different numbers on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those, those all need to be firmed up with firm pricing from our trade partners, our subcontractors, as, as well as we, we, this is part of the path, right? So we're, what we're going to review here is, there's two different paths. There could be, you know, column option one, option two. There could be option three, option four, some combination of these two documents or maybe something that's not even thought about yet that could be incorporated into this. But what we know is based on these two paths is that it is feasible and we're, we're confident that we can get to a 6.1 million, 6.3 million dollar reduction in, in clear order. In order to get the project back to the budget.
Are you saying the 6 million can't go up?
Can it go up? If the number goes up, we're going to continue to find other places to reduce and we're going to find other.
6 million dollar can go up.
Get, maybe I don't understand your question. Does it get 6.3? Does it get 5.9?
6 billion over now. Can that increase?
So the, the areas that I would say could increase is if there's options that are not accepted or if there are, you know, I don't want to say it's out of the realm of possibility that the pricing comes in not favorably, but what we do know is that we have budgeted this conservatively and we have trade partner input to support it. So the likelihood of it going, that number, $6 million number getting smaller is in 5.9 and now we have a bigger delta to close is unlikely. Did I answer that clearly enough? Had a rambling response there, but.
It could go up.
Unlikely, but could. All right. I think we're ready to go back to the cost options.
So we worked with McCown Gordon to, to put these cost options together. And then in order to try and maybe simplify it a little bit, we went through and tried to color code them a little bit. So the yellow areas that you see on this, which kind of show up as not quite yellow on there, which I guess it's green on there, but the highlighted areas here that you see are areas that we're not sure want to be cut from the project. A lot of them can be added later. The green highlighted ones that we have shown here are ones that we think are pretty easy and not going to affect a whole lot. Or what we've done is add this orange column on the right that puts them on a wish list. And oftentimes what we'll do in a situation like this is, as we've said, we have those contingency moneys available. There's also funds you guys have available that you can choose to add some of these back in here. All of the items that are on this, on this orange area right now add up to 1,800,000. So I don't know if we'll get all of them back, but we can get a lot of them back. And we'll see, have to see how that shakes out. For instance, when we were doing the Remington School project, we weren't sure if we could afford the rubber track on the walking track at the top loaded gym. But then as contingency money came available, we were able to add that in towards the end of the project. So the items on here that are in orange are all items that can be added in, you know, the last six months to a year of the project. They don't have to be decided on right now. It's things that are square footage related, that you can't give back to the project and things like that. There, those aren't on the wishlist pieces. So that just gives us some flexibility later on so that we can add these back as funds become available. So you want to start going through these?
Yeah, let's do. So we've got, in apologies, this is a long list times two because there's two options.
And, uh, let me clarify the two options. The two options are all centered around the, the secure connecting link between the, the main building and the VAWA building. So option one has $500,000 incorporated into it to make a fully enclosed conditioned space that has a mechanical lift that would allow access to the basement or to the port level, to the VAWA level, which is six feet higher, and then to the run, the walking track area, which is six foot higher from that. And they would all be enclosed. Option two does not have the lift, but it, and it has a fence connection for security, like a wrought iron fence that would create security between those two buildings. So there's $50,000 allocated towards that. So that's the difference between option one and option two. And like Barry said, I, we just want to give a place to start. You may not agree with some of the things that we have in yellow or green. You may think some of the green should be in yellow. And that's perfectly fine. That's a conversation we need to understand. And you'll have till next month to kind of think that through and, and we can come back to it and really make sure over the next month, excuse me, we have that dialed in.
Yeah, I do want to be clear here is the ask tonight is not make a decision on which path you want. The, the acknowledgement here is that there is agreeance that this is a feasible path forward to get the project to a budget and agree that we are comfortable with this approach and able to move forward. And that is important because we need, we need to understand that we have a clear path to the budget before we can go execute contracts with contractors through a guaranteed maximum price amendment for part of that work. I will say, and, and we'll explain this a little bit more, is there are, there is a time element that's associated with it. So it is, it is important. It's relevant. We need to keep that in mind and be prepared to move forward quickly because there are cost impacts by delaying this further. And we'll, we'll touch on that a little bit further here. So as we dive into these options, these first highlighted ones are really centered around the site as, and focused on parking. So this, these two are kind of going together as we got north parking lot would be removing asphalt on that surface. And it would be, you know, basically graded out for future parking and would include really just removing that completely. And then option two is, is another area on the north where we've got some removal of really the. Uh some removal of really the um that that section of parking. And option number three, there's a modular block retaining wall, so there's a there's a retaining wall um that kind of goes across the ravine. Um directly north of the Voag building that kind of goes up to the uh current modular location. Um or portable classrooms. This would be to eliminate that modular block retaining wall and just um graded out. And oversee that area. Um alternate number four, this is the kickball field, the wall and the fencing for the the playground that is. To the southeast of the school. Um this would be to remove that area. Alternate number five, this is the this is actually an ad option, so the the base bid is to do a. A polished concrete or um sealed concrete floor. On the walking track, this would be would be to add and make that a rubber floor or a uh you know, more rubber finished surface.
And all these.
Go ahead.
So alternate one, two, five, everything Barry's gone through so far are on that wishlist item that that can be added towards the end of the project.
You wanna explain the X next to everything there?
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out, Jordan. It's the little X, so you have. At you know, the description, you have the deduct of the add and then the number. There's an X beside the number. If that X is. In that box, that is included in the total below, so if it doesn't have an X in it, it's not included in the six point six point one million dollar number. Um on the far right, there are some some notes associated with this. And all this is our way to communicate whether we have bids, like hard numbers from trade contractors, or if this is a target savings. In other words, we. We have an educated reason of why we put a hundred thousand bucks in there is because we know that we can get at least that much out of it um by reducing that. The um. Lost my train of thought. Oh, there's other notes there as well, and and some of these are where we get into options, so it's like. If you wanna accept. One of this, you can accept the other one, and this will explain it. It it might be talking about the same way, and it's it's kind of you can take a little bit from it, or you can take a lot from it, but you can't take them both. Um. We've got another ad option here for some uh exterior window, excuse me, exterior stone projections um to to make those. Um to a brick veneer instead of metal wall panel, yeah, add those as a brick veneer instead of metal wall panel. Uh alternate seven is to reme- remove those two-story stone projections on the west side of the building and removing those completely.
Uh you wouldn't see you'd still see the stars around them. It just wouldn't be projected out, so yeah.
I'll let you explain that.
The reason we did that honestly was to help prevent to to shade those windows a little bit from the sun uh. I don't know that it's a hundred percent it's worth a hundred fifty eight thousand dollars, but uh that's why we're saying it's not a bad option to select because. Way of building a look that'd be basically essentially the same. Alternate eight is actually, we had specified uh a cast stone product. Uh the alternate was to go to real stone. It's actually cheaper to go to real stone, so it's to go to real stone for those areas instead of uh cast stone. So again, it's only fifteen hundred dollars, but I think everybody rather have real stone than cast stone, so that was pretty simple.
Um nine A and B, and this is where the two the two paths forward. Again, very like Greg mentioned, in this particular option, option one is this is assuming a fenced. We're calling it a fenced option, but it's the option with a secure secure perimeter, um does not include a lift to go from up to down. Okay, the al- alternate ten, this is to remove the Voag renovations from the project and keep that as an alternate. Um the scope is is pretty standalone and um could could be potentially made into its own standalone. Wishlist project. We don't have a list there, but that is an option. Uh we also have some other kind of alternative approaches to this.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving parts to this one. Uh basically, what this one affects is the art room, because the art room is the majority of the work done in Voag. Uh the we've talked about a couple of different options there. Uh obviously, we need an art room. We're not trying to take away art or anything like that. So but the art could be moved to where the weight room is, exact same amount of square footage uh could be put there uh and so. Everything we've talked about with the art teacher wouldn't be compromised at all. Uh then you could move the weight room down into the basement. Uh and then have one wrestling mat down there and move rest and keep wrestling over the rest of the wrestling over in the Voag building, so you really wouldn't have to do any renovations to that space. Uh so. And the other option would be to put weights over in the Voag building and put keep wrestling down in the basement, so there's some moving parts there, but. We we think we can do this, A, that would be like one of the last summer pieces of work that that was done, and and B. Uh there's alternates that we can or alternate locations that we can do to maintain the exact same function with the exact same amount of square footage for art. Uh and just do things a little bit differently there.
Alright, we're also tracking some other things like adding some water faucets on the east side of the building for convenience. We're we'll get to those. Those are pretty. Are relatively small values, but we're tracking it on this sheet to make sure we we don't lose sight of it. Um i- as we move into the uh next section here, again, focused primarily around the site, we've got. Um the northwest parking lot from from the building currently has um. You know, it's it's paved, it has storm drains. This would be to um. Reduce that, and and we're anticipating that there's about a hundred thirty thousand dollars in savings uh by reducing that area. And eliminating that storm drainage. Um there's also some. The the base, this is the rock base underneath of that paving, there is an option here to reduce the thickness of that and the cost associated with it. Um eliminating lighting and electrical. Um sorry, site three, we scratched that one. It's not feasible. Site four, eliminate the lighting and electrical and better than the concrete walls at the stairs. Um we're we're validating this feedback from the from the electrician at this point, but um we're anticipating those to be removed. Now, this is a this is a little bit larger one, and I think there's some um obvious implications here, but. Uh this would be to provide a a crushed concrete or a rock parking lot in lieu of an asphalt surface. Um for site five. Again, we're we're anticipating getting firm values on that one, um but but this is of note is, you know, like like up above. Site two, this cannot be accepted if um site two is is accepted or vice versa. If we accept site two, we can't accept site five. Um the playground is handled on a master budget. That that cost has not been or that scope hasn't been included in the contract or in our our set of drawings at this point. Um there is some seating and plantings around the a little bit of seating and plantings around the project um at the end of construction.
Um the playground was we included a hundred thousand dollars in the master budget for that.
We did, yeah, thank you. Um this would be to move back seating and plantings. I think it's one one thing to note here is. Uh it as it stands today, our current contract completion would would be take place really kind of in the middle of winter. Um which is not a feasible time to be doing seedings and plantings. Um this would allow the district to go do take care of that work. Uh at the appropriate time in April, May, when it's appropriate to be putting in move seating and plantings. Um now we're gonna kind of move into the we call it the shell. This is what makes up the outside skin of the building. Um we've got some options here to remove a stone cap and utilize a refinished metal cap. Um and and this has a pretty healthy savings with it. Again, this is a target based on some details that we've provided. Um and and we're chasing this one out with the trade partner. Shell three, seven through twelve wing, um on the backside of the seven through twelve in the cafeteria area. Um this is to provide a different metal wall panel system. Um it has some other implications with it, but um we believe that this one is worth running out, and we we feel that we can get some some. Good savings on that one by using a different metal panel system uh as opposed to what's currently planned.
What are those implications?
Um this this one would change it from a metal stud wall to an insulated metal panel, so it's a call them a sandwich.
That's the IMP.
IMP.
Yeah, okay.
Um we're we're watching this one because there's there's some other changes that we're gonna talk about later in this that may impact what that looks like. Um on the roof, we've got some mechanical screens around mechanical units, so it's basically a fence that shields those from view. Um this would be to eliminate those completely. And um all associated structural steel metal panels, they're uh pretty sizable up there. Um we are tracking an option here to um change from metal wall panels to brick in some 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 s- specific locations. Um in in this particular part of the region, um it's actually cheaper to use brick than than this metal wall panels on the current system that we have. Um so we're we're at least checking this one out. We're gonna continue to work with S P T and figure out if there's anything. Uh that's feasible there because that does obviously impact the the outside elevations of the building.
Is that the on exterior?
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah, correct. Um shell eight, this is to lower the structure above the stage. Currently, there is a called a fly space, but there's basically a. Elevated ceiling um that is meant to house kind of the reading system and all the things that go with the stage. Um and and a substantial amount of structural steel and and exterior envelope with that. Um as well as some fire dampers or fire exhaust system um with that, so this would be to bring that system down. So it matches the the roof line of the existing or of the cafeteria area.
So this takes out the ability to use that as a fly space, but you know, Eric, you wanna talk about your conversation with Sarah?
Well, we. The top to Sarah.
I didn't see Sarah.
Uh they're just they're it's a it's a high space, uh like what they're saying, and there's a lot of equipment that goes with that. Um we just felt like that was an area that was worth exploring to to remove and move the situation.
Doesn't change the stage size, uh and that doesn't change the acoustics and everything that we did to make that functional. Performing space except for the ability to bring the fly spaces.
Nothing we currently have and or have had, so.
Yeah, um. Alright, shell, I'm sorry, shell eight, we're still running this one out, but this is a this is an option. There's existing windows and doors in that existing gymnasium that are currently being infilled. Um we gotta run that one out with the with the design team to see if that's feasible.
Nothing's been included yet.
Yeah, we we don't have anything anticipated there, so it's still planning on being uh infilled and removed. Um shell nine, this is an option to go to a um metal wall panel um. On the exterior of the building, um wh- what we discovered in the uh there's there's kind of different manufacturers, so. I'm gonna use a really bad analogy, but it's kind of like different vehicle brands is. We've we've assumed that there is a lower cost panel system that meets the performance requirements of the project at a lower cost. To go to the one that has been um designed and and called out in the specification is actually an add of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We've not accepted that add cost, um but that's out there if that is a a move that we need to track.
Where are these panels located? The two entry locations, the dark via, yeah, the ones two ends, yeah, and also you can just if you want to know more than you want about this. You go on Dry Design's website, and their vice president is Jase is Jeff Zief, and you go on Zief Panel, and their owner is Jason Zief. So they're kind basically they're the same panel, um or similar panel, uh but uh we may not end up with either one of those. I think there's some options that that fit the pricing that that I think we wanna look at, uh that will be just as attractive and just as uh maintenance free as as these, so. It the gist here is that we have we'll have a different metal panel, but uh it won't affect anything else.
You wanna talk about the colors and e- either manufacturer has the same virtually the same colors and the the same panel sizes and it's. You know, one of them maybe has a proprietary clip of how it gets a fast into the building um that they charge a premium for, but. Um each each one's a little bit different.
Yeah, it's just changing metal panel.
Will there be any associated labor by doing one or the other? One's tougher to put in or?
Well, I think there's some other options that we wanna explore there uh that do have some labor savings. There's Dry Design panels and these aluminum composite panels that are similar. They're the highest dollar panel that you can get. Uh there's other options that we've used that I think are just as durable and that we've used on a lot of other projects. Uh that we can look at for sure.
So at this point, we've included the Zief panel um and and it would be, you know, we're gonna continue to explore that, so shell ten. Um this is to remove an acoustic deck sit- system. Um at the and I I don't remember where this was.
It's a second floor of the elementary area.
Thank you. Um basically, it's just changing it to a different acoustic deck system. Um and there's some technical stuff behind those letters that are in there, but um we're just changing from one acoustic deck to the system to another. And that one is included. Um we have worked through the concrete subcontractor to uh address some details and labor on the project. Um this is working with those folks to to um make their concrete package as efficient as possible. Um we've got some large walls in the basement um of the gym that are, there's a lot of ins and outs, and we're working through that with them to make sure that they've got that labor cost. Uh correct, um and they've got that maximized, so. This one is a is ongoing, and we've gotten some good feedback from those contractors here recently, in in fact, today, that 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 savings has actually gone up.
One one thing we wanna point out here is I know there's uh that's kind of a precarious situation here, but being in in the concrete industry. But McCann Gordon has done a great job of keeping everything the conflict of interest free. I guess it's the best way to put that. So there was no information shared that shouldn't have been shared to give anybody any advantage. In fact, on this, uh the concrete number was. Quite a bit higher than than the original estimate, and and what we're finding is is a lot of it is associated associated with labor. And we we went with our we talked to our structural engineer and tried to come up with some different mix designs that would help us. Put it more of a dent in the uh in the concrete number, and and we did change the mix design. Uh mix design has to do with. Materials that the structural engineer calls out whether there's rock in it, and sometimes they'll specify a type of rock that's not available locally, and that drives up the cost. Uh so we were able to change the mix design. Uh he said it saves you a little bit more than this a hundred and eleven thousand shown on here, but but the message I think here is we. Everything is conflict of interest free. You guys did a great job with that, and uh we know where the costs are. It's not associated with materials.
Yeah, I and to add to that is, you know, this is this is all done in a competitive environment. Um all the way down, so McCann Gordon is not directly bidding the concrete material, the ready mixed supply, our subcontractors are. Um so they're in turn providing a competitive environment to ready mixed suppliers and know that they have done that diligence. Um and and again, that's all in a public environment. They have the opportunity to bid on it um regardless where it comes from, so. We can move on to shell number twelve. Um we've got some large trusses over the uh gymnasium, the new gym. Um this is a uh an option to um connect those trusses together, so they're they're obviously too large to ship. Too large to span in one continuous piece of metal, uh so they have to be connected in the middle. Um this is to change that welded connection to a bolted connection, which reduces the amount of labor and time on site. Um so anytime we're talking about labor, we're we're making significant reductions, so this is like changing a two-day activity to a couple-hour situation.
What does that do to the structural integrity between welding and bolts?
Nothing. We've had our.
I'm not I'm not a structural engineer.
Yeah, we had our structural engineer take a look at it. He was perfectly fine with it.
Yeah.
Is there any future maintenance on making sure bolts are tighter and anything like that?
Not for that.
Okay, moving to shell thirteen, um, this is a, this is a look that we've, we've taken at uh. Changing the length of the limestone on the exterior of the building. Um, this one is not accepted at this point because there is another option down below where we're changing. Uh, potentially changing some of that stone to a different material, uh, kind of altogether, but. Um, know that this still needs to be shaken out. Um, we've, we've got some work to do there, but kind of in any combination, we feel confident that we're gonna be able to get. Uh, more than a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in reductions, whether it's made up in brick to metal panels or. Um, excuse me, metal panel to brick or changing the length of the stone or some combination thereof.
We put it in yellow because we not sure the look is gonna be what we want. You can have random lengths on the front. So that's on, like Barry said, we need to bet out a little bit more, but there are some savings.
Can you speak just a little more louder?
Yeah, I do. Uh, you're not the first person to say that. Well, we, we didn't necessarily like this one because we think it can make the look of the building. Though different than having random lengths versus the same lengths and so, uh, so that's why this one isn't quite accepted yet or we need to have some work to do. And then when, on the next two, I'll just take these very. On the picket rail, in lieu of perforated metal panel, and then next one, picket rails in the gym. So the way we've typically done these. The, the railing in the gyms is to have a aluminum aircraft cable on those. Uh, it's no maintenance, it's easy to see through. Uh, there's only a, on the picket rails in the gym, there's a thirty nine hundred dollar savings to go to. Just painted pickets like a, just a vertical uh, material, uh. It's not gonna affect any function, so that might be something you wanna consider. Some people like the vertical pickets better. Because on the horizontal ones, people can put their feet on them and stretch them out, so uh, that's really you guys' preference. And, and then on the, on the picket rail and the perforated metal panel, uh, not sure we wanna do. It's only forty nine hundred dollars or forty two hundred dollars in savings. It's not shown as accepted on this. Uh, we put those on the stairs inside and on the, on balcony looking down to the uh. Uh, sec- from the second level to the first level and, you know, there's some, yeah, gotta be careful of what you can see. Girls in dresses on the first, on the second level and that kind of thing, some modesty issues, and so we don't recommend changing that. So that's why that's that way.
Thanks Greg. Okay, in the storm, shell sixteen, in the storm shelter, um, we're gonna explore an option to change that from a concrete wall to a twelve inch masonry wall. Um, we've got some studying that needs to be there to see if that is worth, um, worth any savings or reductions. Last one here on the shell is changing the stone sill to two and a half and, two and a quarter inch top and bottom sawn. I know that's horribly boring and, but believe it or not, it's, takes a lot of labor and a lot of fabrication time to, um, to do those. Makes it so courses out correctly. Alright, um, moving into the interiors. Um, we, we've got a couple of looks here at um, the bleachers in the. Really, this would be in the, in the cafeteria. Um, we've got an option here that would reduce the number of bleachers in that area by half. And then another option that would be uh, eliminating those bleachers. You know, at this point in time, we're eliminating them completely with the idea that they would be, uh, they are on a wish list. Uh, and, and would be brought back ideally before construction, but have a path forward to that.
To really like, all of these items that we're gonna go through on the interiors on this, the rest of this page, uh, I think. Are on the, except for a couple are on the wishlist, cause these can be added back later in the project and, and uh. We have some flexibility there.
Interior two, is this simplifying some of the wall features in the cafeteria? We, we don't have a plan exactly what that looks like yet. But based on feedback from our drywall contractor, uh, and some others is, is there are some feasible paths forward to reduce that by about fifty thousand dollars. And this is where we're gonna work with the S P T team to get that uh, down and to make sure that we get that. Uh, interior three is, this would be the ceiling within the cafeteria. Uh, again, kind of targeting uh, a, a specific amount there, about fifty thousand dollars.
Another thing, I mean, we need to hear what your trade partner has suggestion, suggestions about. Uh, because we designed that ceiling based on the acoustic engineers recommendations for your performances, so we don't wanna compromise that. We'll see what he has to say and then see how that shakes out.
Right. Um, this would be to reduce uh, the special, special ceiling features in the media center. Um, and I, I don't think this is removing them completely, but making some targeted reductions in that area. Interior six, we've got rubber flooring in the weight room. This would be to remove that, uh, go to a sealed concrete. Um, and Craig, do you wanna talk, I think you've had some experiences where this is maybe done, been done or a strategy to.
Yeah, we, when we did Remington, uh, they came, we had, we put in the rubber flooring, but then they came in with their uh. Weight stations for like clean press and they had the platforms associated with the uh, with the weight stations. You don't need both. You don't need the weight, the platform and, and the rubber flooring, so uh, and when we did Andale, we did all rubber flooring. They don't, they didn't want any platforms for like weight stations, so that might have to do with how you guys wanna do weights. Uh, cause there's, you know, you don't have, wouldn't have to even do it everywhere if you wanted to, you could do part of it.
Alright.
Utilize a different type of wood flooring in the gymnasium. That is actually just switching out manufacturers. It's the same system. Uh, but a different manufacturer, uh. Uh, or supplier is a better way to put it, it's manufactured, it's put in place on site, but a different supplier. There is another option to go to a different type of wood floor, uh. We specified, more than you wanna know, but uh, we specified a fixed channel floor so that the wood floor. A lot of wood floors just float on top of the concrete. Uh, this one is actually fixed channel floor. Uh, it has great balance, it has, it's great for uh, reducing wear and tear on athletes and. And have had a lot of good feedback from it. Probably more of a, a community college or college level floor than high school floor, honestly. Uh, we're doing a replacement floor for Wichita right now, two five nine school district and, and they just want the floating floor. So we're gonna get a cost option for a floating floor as well. Either, you, you probably have a floating floor now. It's like this. Probably more common than, than not. Fort Hayes, I saw their installation, they have a floating wood floor. Uh, the same type of floor that we'd be talking about at this other, other option. So there's, there's a ton of different options for wood, silicon gyms and.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll add that and expand this list, but that is an option that hasn't been put on here yet. So this is just be, what, what we're anticipating here is just changing the manufacturer, not changing to a different attachment system. Um, this next one, interior eight would be uh, to, to remove vinyl wall graphics. Greg, you wanna talk about the locations of those and?
Those are mostly, I think, in the elementary school area. Uh, there's some large graphic walls that we have to, uh. Again, it's on the wishlist, it can be added at the very end of the project, or you, you could paint it an accent wall also and, and look that way, make, make it work that way. Uh, you paint words on the walls and things like that, dude. There's a lot of different things that can be done, done with that. For fifty two thousand dollars.
Accent walls are really inexpensive. Um, interior nine, salted locks, this is the um, secure access control system on the exterior doors. We're, we're addressing this in another section and have a strategy on how we're, we're handling that, um, access control, the security. Uh, cabling, P A system, it's all kind of addressed here in a little bit when we get into that section. Um, interior ten is epoxy showers in the wall surfaces, uh, in, in the solid surface at, um, the showers. We're gonna investigate this one to see if this is worth, worth anything. We've done this successfully and it's been reasonable. Uh, it, it actually, it's been cheaper to use epoxy than solid surface, but we need to, we need to validate this here. Um, going from floor tile to epoxy, um, in the, in the restrooms is actually an add. So we're, we're keeping that one on there in case this, this is something that wants to be included. The next one, again, a little bit of a technical system here, but um, the, the actual sealer that goes on the concrete. Um, is changing to a different type of sealer. And then interior thirteen, um, wall tile of the stairs, we're, we're, we would reduce about two thousand square feet of wall tile. Um, interior fourteen, this is, this is an option to re- remove the cafeteria and bleachers, um, at this point. Um, we've placed that on the right, the orange box would be um, targeting this as a wishlist item and. Identifying an opportunity to get that back into the project. We've got an option here to reduce seating in the gym by a hundred and seventy two seats. And um, again, this is an estimated cost. We've got some work to do there with the, the bleacher guy, but. Um, we've had some conversations with Eric and uh, in the district to understand that this one. Um, is, is potentially lower on the priority list, but we, we have time on this to make that decision.
It's higher on the priority, priority list to keep.
Higher on the priority list to keep.
And so, but we don't, like you said, we don't have to make that decision for quite some time.
What's the current capacity?
I, I just heard you're gonna ask me that. I think it's eleven hundred. Kevin, do you know?
That's kinda what I remember.
I'm looking now. I don't remember off the top of my head either.
What's our current gym, do you know?
The one thing about a couple of gym is you have the walking track up around the top. Kind of people hanging out on the walking track area, just standing up. So even as for substate and things, there's areas that you can bring in additional seating. Uh, so uh, yeah, just thinking, this was an option we thought about again, not something we have to figure out anytime soon.
So it'd be smaller than our, it'd be less seating than our gym current?
No.
If you reduce one seventy two?
Yeah, not with the overall capacity that, that I think we'll, we'll end up with. But uh, I don't know, I think, I thought you said also five hundred seats, you guys wanted five hundred seats for the. Uh, cafeteria or, cause when you have programs, you have about five hundred seats for people for, for an event in, in the gym. Was that accurate or not?
That's um.
But yeah, the intent would not be to take it down lower than what you have in your current gym. I don't think we wanna do that.
Is that just a matter of like the bleachers that pull out or is that?
Yeah.
So it's not like they could be added back?
Yeah, this is not one you could add back later. That's why, that's why it's in yellow, cause and why we talked about maybe not being something you wanna consider. So, yeah.
Yeah, and with, with each, well, with a lot of these, especially these ones that are like bleachers. Um, wall graphics, gym floors, those have, those have time on them, so. While it maybe uses a strategy today to get this, and I'm not taking this one specifically, the bleachers specifically, but. While that may be a strategy today to get the project to a budget, know that on the bleachers, for example. Those bleachers wouldn't be ordered until like for another year. So we have the opportunity to delay that decision until that point. So it could be one of those where it's like, we're gonna go ahead and not accept that option here. Take some other ones, knowing that we can always come back to it or vice versa. There's a lot of flexibility built into this process. Um, interior sixteen is removing the lockers on the second floor by a hundred and sixty three. This would go from a total count of three seventy two to two oh nine.
Another option that we talked about, that we haven't vetted out yet is making two tiered lockers instead of single tier lockers to be able to fit more in at a lesser cost. We need to. We haven't, we've got that price yet.
Yeah, we've gotten that pricing today. We just haven't had a chance to run it out, run it to ground.
Yeah, we, I had the suggestion, or the district did it, with the fifth and sixth grade lockers, having those two tiered and then. Kind of reducing the total to around two hundred to two fifteen for the, to the seven twelve.
Right now, we have like a hundred and fifty, seven twelve students. So we don't need three hundred and seventy two.
Alright, um, interior seventeen, this is um, the, the interior surface of the gym. So currently it's scheduled to be drywall. This would be changing that to an interior metal wall panel. Um, or, or some, potentially some other strategy there, but um, this is a, this is an option that uh, where we need to run, run the ground.
And one reason we did, uh, we just got the bids through the last, well, July, February fourth, but trying to bet out. The, the, the sheet rock they came in really high and we found out just deliveries from, it has, has to come all the way from Slina. There's no place closer to get it from, uh, and so just the travel costs and everything else impacted. Uh, the cost quite a bit on the drywall bids, and so we thought, well, if we can replace it, the drywall with a metal panel, so we can save a lot of money. Uh, there are double layers of, of drywall in that, in the gym too, so uh. This is an area we think we can save a lot of money on it, and it's all basically up high too, so falls aren't gonna hit it and really uh. Be impacted by that.
Alright, we're on the home stretch for option one. Sprinkler one, um, the current design has all the sprinkler heads is concealed. In other words, they are. Basically have a little cover that goes over them, so you just see this round disc in the ceiling. Um, this would change kind of selected areas to a, a recessed. Um, system where the sprinkler head just kind of sticks out a little bit and you just see kind of this metal star on the bottom of it. Doesn't perform for. Doesn't affect the performance of the sprinkler system itself. Um, it's just a look and feel and additionally, it's, you know, in selective areas, you don't want those exposed. For various reasons. Gets thrown stuff out, so. Uh, we've worked with the design team to, to come back to understand where there's some, some options to reduce those. Um, now we're getting into some more technical ones, H V A C, this is heating and air conditioning. Uh, we're gonna explore. Moving to duck socks, so this is a fabric duct, um, in the gym, the weight rooms and the wrestling rooms.
I think we already have it in the gym. It's mainly the weight room and the wrestling room.
You're right, that is correct.
Yeah. We, we use duck socks a lot and they're less expensive, they look good and uh, I think it's a good solution.
Is there any maintenance costs associated with them from a longevity or. Replacement perspective?
You can take them down in Washington, actually, uh, but uh, you never had to have that happen. Uh, the next one is Dyken and a little Aon rooftop equipment. Both of these companies are at the top of the list as far as. Um, quality is concerned. What happens a lot is that, uh, they weren't sure they could, I think on this one. They weren't sure if they could meet the deadline as far as lead times and all, uh, but after vetting it out, they can. Uh, one more piece that we need to figure out on this is that, uh, with the Aon equipment, we were able to. They had a system that had two thermostats per unit, so we have one, one rooftop unit for two classrooms right now. So each teacher is going to be able to have a thermostat in their room. Uh, not a hundred percent sure that we can do that with the Dyken system, uh, which is why we also have on H V A six. Add ceiling fans for sixty four thousand. The, the savings for the, the switch from Dyken to Aon is four hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars, so. You know, a lot of money, uh, for basically the same quality of equipment. Uh, if you put a ceiling fan in a room, uh, teachers, you can read. You can change the temperature of the room by four degrees, so it gives teachers some flexibility there. You might wanna add the fifty, the sixty four thousand for the ceiling fan. There's a lot of places that, that don't do either, and, and so, uh, that's, that's a question about, you know, how we wanna proceed. On that, on that. Yeah. Think there's two per room and, and larger ones have more?
Um, H V A C, this is the fume hood, uh, in the science room. This is moving that from the construction. Budget into the master budget, into the district costs. And that's approved, I think you guys are planning to purchase that. Yeah. Okay, removing sound attenuators from the gymnasium. So basically what this is, is a little. Boot, it's a piece of duck work. Boot, it's a piece of ductwork that goes on the rooftop unit. Uh, return that reduces the amount of noise that comes out of that unit. You wanna talk to the gym environment and why that's a recommended?
Well, it's ten thousand dollars and, uh, yeah, is it okay if you hear the gym, the rooftop units come on in the gym? You have some loud environment anyway, I don't know, that's just a question. You don't, I'm sure you don't have them now, or you don't have anything in there now.
We had a radiator heater, or boiler heater.
To remove mini splits, uh, from the AV racks, that's only if, like, a lot of times AV, you know, e- uh, equipment. The racks, you know, put off a lot of heat, so we'll supplement that with, uh, a mini split system that's just in the room. Uh, you know, if we reduce some of that, like we're talking about anyway, we may be able to reduce that in a manner that. We don't need those mini splits, and that's the cost, uh, for those, uh, that actually is not taken yet, cause we don't know for sure if that's gonna work.
That one's affected by the electrical, and we'll get to that one here in a few minutes, um. This is, this next one is, um, yeah, we talked about the ceiling fans, we've got. Um, a different manufacturer to supply the fans, the grills, uh, the registers, uh, that makes sense. Changing the insulation on the piping from, uh. Two half inch insulation, and this is only on selected pipe sizes. We do have an option here to omit insulation on vertical storm drain pipe, piping, and only insulate the horizontal piping. Um, which is fairly common, uh, in these environments.
The reason you insulate that piping is just for noise, so you don't hear rain mark coming down, so it's. Uh, we're taking it off the vertical but keeping it on any horizontal areas, because there's more noise as, as it goes horizontally.
HVAC ten, we have, uh, changing the duct insulation, uh, to a half, one and a half inch seventy. Or point seven five pound duct wrap in lieu of two inch, three pound, um, and this is on the outdoor. Uh, air and exhaust air in the mechanical room.
Well, how we got a backyard usage or, or efficiencies?
Not a hundred percent sure, honestly, uh, it's only savings of what, twenty-five hundred, twenty-six hundred dollars, so, uh. We can find that out, we can ask.
So it might cost us.
It might not be worth it.
Multiple thousands over long life of it.
Um, changing rectangular duct to round where kind of applicable or, or. Anyplace that we've got something that, that really kinda makes sense, and we've, we're, we're working with the design team. Identify where those areas are, um, and this, this in general doesn't. Have any impact on, um, the performance of the system, in fact, in some cases, it. Round duct is more efficient than rectangular or square. Um, this had changed the grills, registers and diffusers to, uh, steel and aluminum, which is very common.
I'll take the next couple.
Okay, go.
So, um, plumbing one, it's removing the drain tile and piping from under the gym slab, so. You put drain tile around the perimeter of the basement, uh, to case there's any water that gets, uh, rainwater that leak. Uh, gets down to the earth so you can get it out, and then, what we did is we also, when we do gyms, a lot of times, we like to put. Especially for a top loaded gym, where you have kind of a basement condition, we like to put a lot of. Drain tile underneath the, the gym floor as well, uh, that's what this is for, it would be taking that out, and I think I'm fine with that. Went back and looked at the, uh, soils report, and there was no groundwater found in any of the boring, in any of the areas, so. Uh, that would be, what that would be, uh, to take out, we still have it around the perimeter, we just wouldn't have it underneath the gym.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I'm, just to give everybody a little bit of confidence here, you know, the primary. Um, way to prevent water from getting into any kind of basement is controlling the water on the outside of the building. Um, so shedding water away, which is being addressed through grading and paving systems, so. Um, kind of a belt and suspenders approach to this underdrain system.
And the, the next one is manual flush valves instead of the automatic flush valve, so we had automatic flush valves on all the. Toilets and sinks, just to be changing them so that they're, uh, not automatic, so.
Alright, moving into electrical, this is, um. This first one is to switch the, um, secondary wires, so this is going from. The main distribution panel to the next panel board. Um, those wires tend to be large, heavy gauge, a lot of material in them, this is changing those from copper to aluminum. Um, and we've recently gotten prices, pricing back on this one here today, and that, that savings is actually. Uh, upwards of, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars versus a hundred there. Um, we did have a conversation with this, the electrical engineer on this one, he, he agreed, uh, and, and recommended that this be. Accepted, moved to aluminum.
Only downside we've ever seen doing that is that, uh, a maintenance issue. Yeah, you do have to tighten the legs on these, uh, every once in a while, more often than you would with copper. Uh, that's the only downside that we've ever heard from doing something like this.
Is the, uh, all the boxes and everything, the cut offs and stuff, they're gonna be big enough to accommodate the larger gauge. If you have to use larger gauge aluminum than you will copper.
Yeah, and, and that's been reflected in those, yeah. Um, this is an option that we're, we're still running out with the design team, so this is, this is changing. Um, the type of wire that is used, you know, really on, um. Kind of certain portions of the electrical system, so you would go from a. Conduit hard pipe with wire inside of it to a, they call it an MC cable, a metallic cable, it's got a wire or a metal sheath around it, it's kind of halfway flexible. Um, we've not accepted this at, at this time, but it is, it is potentially an option, and we're continuing to chase out the costs on it.
You know, the downside to doing MC cable is that if you ever go and move walls and change things, you, you can't reuse it, you have to, uh, completely. Uh, start over, we still have the conduit for the home runs back to the panels to certain locations, but. Uh, right, the way it is right now, every wire is in a conduit, this will change that, uh, something else.
Um, we're gonna take a look at the lighting of, of resters and see if that's feasible to remove those. Um, this next one would be to reduce the stage lighting, um, there's. Currently a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in there, um, this would be reducing that down to a fifty thousand dollar target.
Um, a little bit more, I think, Eric.
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, and then, next one is stage rating and equipment, and we had four hundred and seventeen thousand dollars in the base, this reduces three hundred thousand of, of that. Still have the stage curtain and everything associated with, uh, making it a, a functional stage and, and, and the appearance of that. Uh, we gotta vet this out a little bit more to see exactly what we can include and not, or don't need for that, same with the lighting.
Yep. Um, this last one here on the electrical gear distribution is, um. Changing a, a main switchboard model number, um, and then deleting some spare breakers. Um, that are in the, included in the panel but are generally unused, so. Um, this is a little bit of a combination there, we've run this out with the electric, or excuse me, the electrical engineer, and, um. This is generally acceptable. Moving down into, um, electrical lighting, this next section, this is an alternative light fixture package. Um, they, there are cheaper models of light fixtures that they can provide. Uh, this is to explore that and go figure out what, you know, can you get the same light fixture, just cheaper?
Problem we have when we, when our engineers specify lights is that the lighting companies, manufacturers, they have. Dictated how they do things, so they will provide one package for all the lights, you can't select individual lights and change them out. But what we can do is ask another vendor for a different lighting package, and that's what this is talking about doing, we won't know. They will submit the fixtures that they wanna replace with, and we'll say yay or nay, um, if, if we think it's an equal. Uh, so that's kinda, that's what that one's about.
Um, this, this next one is reducing the lighting control system, um, and. I'll have to have you talk about this one, Greg, cause the. I don't know how to explain to zero to ten.
I don't know if I'm a hundred percent know what's on the foot in this one either, but, yeah. Because if, we're, our engineers are required to provide two levels of lighting, and sometimes that's automatic sensors, sometimes that's two switches. Uh, we need to vet this one out, it's twenty-five thousand dollars with the savings that they're targeting, but I think we need more information from them on this.
Uh, and again, this one's, this one's conservative, we're, we're hopeful that we can come to an agreement with the design team on this one that we can get more than that. Fixer eighteen-one, this is going to a basket troffer, um, and, and this is kind of in addition to. Uh, the alternate light fixture package, but that's specific to that one specific light fixture.
So what this is doing is, we have a more decorative fixture in all the classrooms, and it's changing or to something. It's not this, but it has a flat panel LED, uh, look, uh, to it, to, to different appearance and to the fixture.
Okay, we've gotten some feedback from, uh, the electrician that there is potentially some savings to go from a two by four light, so these. These light fixtures here would be considered two foot by four foot. Um, adjusting those to a two by two light fixture, we've not accounted for anything there, because sometimes you have to add more lights, um, instead of.
Now, this is two by four lights in place, so, we have two by twos shown everywhere, and, 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 and. We've gone to that a lot more with LED, we didn't, used to do this before LED, but with LED lights, they had put out more lights, so we've gone to more of a two by two approach. Uh, and this is to look at, can we replace that, is there savings to go to a two by four, which is what these are?
Um, the next one is standardizing the light lengths in the cafeteria and ceiling, there are. Very specific lengths that are associated with those, if we can find a way to standardize those, um, we, we believe there's gonna be some. Type of savings there, we've gotta identify what that is. Um, there is a potential for this stage lighting to go to a different vendor that, that may have some cost implications. Um, down to lighting seven, this is changing the pole headlights and floodlights to different manufacturer. And then, um, these next two are just looking at some options that, that have been provided by the. Electrician to provide different downlights and different high bay lights, the high bay lights would be in the large high volume spaces. So, providing a different light, light many, or different light fixture that meets all the performance requirements. Down in the special systems, this is changing a twenty-four strand fiber to, or excuse me, changing a seventy-two strand fiber to a twenty-four strand fiber. Uh, there's about forty-four hundred dollars in savings there, and then as we keep going down, Eric. Okay, this, this next section, um, and this connects back to the master budget, so currently. Our construction budget includes all of the AV security systems, um, complete. Within our construction costs, so on this master budget, we were talking about the forty-two million dollar budget, um, that includes all of those special systems. Um, in reviewing that with the design team and the district. Um, we believe there, there are systems that may be able to be consolidated, systems that can be reduced, uh, particularly around the. Um, the number of doors with access controls, you know, card swipe, um, the PA system can be consolidated based on how the district is using their phone system. And then, kind of finally is pulling that out of the construction cost and moving that to that master budget cost where we've got. Um, five hundred thousand dollars allowed, or allotted for, um, those systems plus the insurance.
That's why I brought up the, the insurance of, so there's like one to one point two million dollars in this budget, but this, when this was bid, uh. These numbers came out double what we typically see on projects, and so, uh, we had too much in the design for this. And so we need to vet out that design better, and, uh, as Barry said, talk about where we have some overlap, I know we've talked about. Some of the, uh, some of the security pieces as well, so we have some work to do here to get back to that. Again, it was double what we thought it should have been.
Yep. Okay, last one here on AV is, um, providing a, a different manufacturer for TV mounts and racks and things that are associated with that. Um, for twenty-seven thousand dollars. Okay, as we get into these last four here, um, we've got an option to, um. Reorganize the spaces around the music room and the stagecraft area and.
So, I'll just get into this, uh. One area we thought, one approach that we thought could be taken, is that you can move the music room, instead of having it behind the stage. Uh, move it next to, where, move it to where the band room is and push the band room over, be the same size. Uh, we would lose that stagecraft area, but, uh, band and music would be right next to each other, and then you could still even have the art room. I think, is that right, Kevin, have the art room in there as well?
Yes, that's one option to do the art, music and band, um, and that's considering moving the weights downstairs and leaving. Boag, so that all kind of goes together.
And those three spaces would all be the same size as what we have now, so, there's a lot of room there to move things and not affect. Any function or program, uh, except for having the, the ma- the music right behind the stage. Uh, this is one that we need to come back to you with and see exactly what that savings is. It may not be worth doing this, because it's like we said previously, uh, you can't get square footage back, uh, and so, if we don't do. This one, we need to do something else, but it's a conversation we wanted to bring up, that there is an option to keep art, music and band. At the end of the gym, having the same size as we have now, but actually reduce a couple of areas in square footage. Uh, without affecting the function as a program, uh, so, again, something we need to vet out more, bring back to you. And then you can make a decision later on about that. The next one is to reduce, uh.
This is existing area B, this is the, the space on the, the classroom space on the west side of the existing gym. Um, currently, that's all included in there, in the, in our construction costs, we've.
Actually, I think this is, this is in the master budget, this is a hundred thousand dollars for the.
This would be that area, the master budget is for the locker rooms, so this would be that, those classrooms on the second, like, second floor and the connection between them. We've not included this at this point, but it is an option if, if that's feasible, but. We know that some amount of work is gonna be needed to connect the elementary wing to the seven through twelve wing for that. ADA access and, and flow through traffic. Um, we also wanted to take a look at, um, what the cost savings would be to reduce the size of the building by. Two thousand square feet, um, and this would be really kind of in addition to the music room. Change, so kind of a net of thirty-seven hundred square feet if this one is accepted, currently not factored into this equation, but. Um, is an option that we can explore if that's desired.
And then the last one is we move high and low canopies, I believe that's the, the white pieces that you see around the front entry areas. Um, it's quite a bit of savings of that, there's a lot of framing, a lot of metal panels in that, we can simplify that and, and. Targeting savings of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for that, so quite a bit for that, and it will show you what that could look like in a, uh. Uh, in a rendering later on. It's definitely worth considering, that is factored in, but the, again, the, the reducing the area B remodel and the reducing the size of the building by two thousand square feet or not.
Okay. So at the bottom of this, that's where the six million one hundred and nine thousand dollars is coming from, that we were pulling forward into the master budget, and so again, this is one scenario. Um, this took like forty-five minutes, so we can run through option two, or it can give you the highlights and the differences.
We don't mean to go through option two, the only difference between option two is that five hundred thousand dollars, uh. The, the connector between the two is, uh, changed to fifty thousand dollars to do wrought iron fencing, and then some of these other items aren't, uh, taken out. So, you guys can spend the time to see what's important to you and, and, and maybe get some feedback, uh. But it's just meant to show two approaches that, that you guys can consider for that.
Yeah. Looking at six million dollars.
Terry, just a second, sorry to interrupt, uh, for instance, if you were to not do the five hundred thousand dollars. Uh, for the connector between the two on this one, and just do fifty thousand dollar wrought iron. Uh, you would deduct another four hundred fifty thousand dollars from this option, and, uh. And we'd be, we'd be where we need to be.
What would the cost be to do that?
What would the cost be to do that at a later date?
Which, which one?
The connector?
Yep. Because we go on state said, if we wait and try to pick some of these items at a later date, they may or not be able to be completed.
That one.
One, right?
Yeah.
And two, the cost is gonna be significantly more.
That one would be more because uh, depending on when it's brought back, because there's some steel and depending on how we did it, I mean, we could probably do it out of light gauge framing, which is like metal studs instead of steel, red iron. But uh, that one would be something I think you'd wanna determine earlier on.
Yeah. And, and that would be for the enclosed one. The fencing one obviously has a longer fuse tube before that one would be.
So sorry to interrupt.
The board has to approve the recommendations.
Okay, so it, are you?
Yeah, I mean, the board has to approve any changes to recommendations that you presented. Uh, if we don't approve some of them, then that six billion drops and then we're over budget. Correct?
Correct.
And what we're doing is, is what was risen, presented, the quality of items that were built in to the construction of the gym, we're lowering the quality to some degree on some of those line items.
You know, I don't know, I think, if that's accurate by and large. I mean, there may be one or two pieces that you can touch.
It's obvious there would be some of them.
But I, I mean, like when we're talking about saving five hundred thousand dollars to go from an Aon unit to a Dicon unit, there's no quality reduction in that.
Other than there's potential that each room wouldn't have their own thermostat.
Yeah.
And that may or may not be a big deal to some.
But I'm talking about efficiency of, of units and, and utility costs. Both of those units are at the top of the list of.
But the overall project quality is to me down a level. It's a matter of opinion, but it's down a level because you've lost that option.
Okay.
But at the end of the day, I mean, something has to go.
Absolutely. Something has to give. Obviously, we're, I would say we're technically over six million dollars. But again, matter of interpretation and opinion. Um, I, I, I think what the question here tonight is that and, and it's been asked, right? We want to approve the GMP two or we're being asked to approve the.
We, we haven't made that ask yet. Um, we wanted to get the group comfortable that there is an approach to, to the budget. These, we're not asking for these two options or we're not asking for you to pick one option or two option here tonight. This is to understand, we are in a, we are in an over budget position. This is to demonstrate we have two, at least two feasible paths to the budget. And we need the board to understand what those impacts are and be prepared to make those decisions when we come back in March for GMP, the final GMP to be approved.
Again, we're, we're approaching a discussion on the question of, how we once stated, the approval of GMP two, which is a nine million. I don't have it pulled up in front of me, but a nine, little nine million dollars. That is a guaranteed maximum price on one hand, but on the other hand, it is, there's a variable in that potentially. Right? Because there's some things that are included, some things are excluded, right? So if there are things that are excluded that come into play, we might have to add on to this list potentially. Is that a fair assumption or fair understanding?
Um, I, I think it's important to understand the kind of specifics around where the concern is. I, we, do you have one specifically? Cause I, I, I guess in general it is as long as the scope of the project doesn't increase, the guaranteed maximum price doesn't go up. When we talk about accepting alternates and things that are on the cost option list, we have detailed accounting that removes those from GMP number two and reduces that cost. And that gets reconciled in the final GMP. And we, we have to provide accounting of all that.
On, on the final, overall, I get that the final overall cost has to be within that forty million, right?
Correct.
Or we can.
Under, under budget or less.
You know, if you wanna look at interest and everything else. I guess what I'm gonna say is, is that we, we were presented with the the contract and it's been just over twenty four hours to go over it and review it. If we were looking at like a two million dollar overage, I would feel more comfortable about personally saying let's, we got this.
Hey Matt.
But.
Just.
So I can't talk.
No, you can't, but do you have a presentation for the, this GMP two that would bring everybody else up to speed on what you're trying to ask?
A presentation? So I, do I need, I have to have a?
No, he's asking if we have a presentation. Yeah, I think.
We haven't talked, we haven't.
They don't know what the GMP two is. They haven't been updated on.
Okay, so are you guys going to?
Yeah.
Go through the GMPs at this moment?
We're ready to move that way of, if.
Okay, I'll let you.
If, yeah.
I don't want you not to ask your question.
Oh, I'm gonna ask him.
That's fine. I just want everybody else to understand what you're talking.
That's fine. We go through the GMP, guys. We'll be asking.
So the, the reason that we went through this in detail is to have an understanding of how are we gonna get the project to the budget? So the next step here is how do we get started into construction knowing that we have a budget overage, we have a path to the budget, at least one path to the budget? We understand and, and as we were brought on board over a year ago, that the, the intent was to get the project started as quickly as possible. So that approach asked us to provide a, we call it a rolling GMP, but it's a phased guaranteed maximum price approach. Where we're bidding out parts of the project and we're gonna contract those before we have an understanding of the full project price. And, and McCown's commitment to you all, when I sat in this room and interviewed was every time we bring a budget to a guaranteed maximum price to the table, we're gonna have a look at the overall project budget. And if the project budget is over budget, we are going to present a path, a feasible path to the budget that is workable and meets the needs of, of the project and the district. So today we went through this, we gave you the budget update, we went through the cost options sheets, which is providing a budget, a path to the budget that is feasible. We understand there are some challenging decisions that need to be made with this cost option. That's unfortunate and, and I, I envy you all for having to make those decisions. Our job is here to inform you of the cost of them. But that's the, the market has said what the value of the work is, is worth. And now our job is to go to work and, and find that path forward to, to the budget. As we fast forward into December, we were working on guaranteed maximum price number two. And this is where guaranteed maximum price number one was the gym renovations that took place last summer to get the gym open for practices and games. The GMP number two was intended to be early release for earthwork, utilities and concrete. So we got bids for earthwork and concrete. Um, the concrete did come in over budget at that point. We were quickly on the heels of that going out to bid for GMP number three, which would include steel, mechanical, electrical, plumbing and fire suppression systems. So we, at the time, we decided we're gonna wait to understand, do we have a, are we okay or do we have a bigger problem? As we took in bids on GMP number three, that was when it was understood that we had a, a more significant problem in that the electrical numbers were higher and part of that was driven by um, the special systems. AV systems, as Greg mentioned, that were overdesigned or whatever you wanna call it. They just came in too much. We've addressed that through the cost option sheet. So after GMP number three has been bid, we then said, let's wait another couple of weeks because we now have GMP number four, the final GMP that's getting ready to bid. We wanted to understand where we're at from a total project look. Um, and that happened on February fourth. Now, I wanna rewind, mind you, that we bid out the earthwork and the concrete packages in December. So our concrete and earthwork guys have been sitting on the hook, waiting to hear back to know if they are awarded the project since, you know, over sixty days or approaching seventy five. So we've been able to use our relationships with them to give them confidence. We're gonna work to get this thing in budget and keep things moving forward. But we are at a point where we, we need to make, we need to make a move. And part of that risk, part of that is the risk of those two contractors um, no longer wanting to participate in the project or the price is increasing. And either way, we have a price increase that would, would be incurred if we don't onboard those contractors soon. The only reason that we are here tonight to present a guaranteed maximum price is because there could be a potential cost increase if, if we don't, which we are working to protect the district and the project from a substantial price increase. As well as we understand your interest in getting the project moved forward quick. If we don't move forward quickly, that also has cost implications by delaying the start date and the subsequent finish, end date of the project. And again, all of those scenarios have cost implications. So because of, of the confidence that our teams have in the ability to come to a budget agreement and get the project into the budget, we are here to present GMP number two. And guaranteed maximum price number two includes earthwork, utility work, concrete and structural steel. And the reason that those scopes are included is the earthwork contractor, um, he, he needs his spot. He needs his contracts guaranteed. So you know, we need to go issue him a contract so that we can give him confidence that he's gonna be the guy on the project and start scheduling our work. Utilities has long lead time items, so we need to get those materials ordered and starting to come to the job sites. We can keep things moving forward as as our earthwork and our utility, or our earthwork and our concrete comes out of the building or comes out of the ground. Building concrete is included because as soon as the earthwork is done, we need to include, we need to get those guys on site so they can start building the foundation systems and getting to work on that. That is a major driver of our schedule. Without those guys on site, um, that has a direct tie to the finished date of the project. Um, then the last one is the structural steel. There are components of the structural steel that are gonna take us anywhere from eight to twelve weeks to, to get. So I know it's February, it's frozen up, but we're looking forward to May first, middle of May, we need to have components, anchor bolts, embeds that are gonna be placed in the concrete. We need to get those on site so we can continue to make sure that that foundation system is working forward. So that's the logic behind why these scopes are included in this nine million, four hundred thousand dollar guaranteed maximum price number two. Um, again, this is in the interest of protecting the risk of the project, protecting the risks um, of, of the district from a future price increase. Yeah, no, to, to really what we learned on our way out here today was we've, we've been having continuous conversations with the earthwork contractor. Um, he was the low earthwork contractor. He was scheduled um, back in Deci- back in December when we had bid this out. He was anticipating being here kind of directly. Once we um, delayed our decision to go contract with him and provide a guaranteed maximum price, he's had to take on other work. So he has currently taken on other work, um, that puts him unavailable and on this project until end of April, or excuse me, end of March, early April. If we aren't able to give him um, a contract here by the end of the week, he's gonna have to pull his bid and then we now need to go to the number two earthwork guy, which has a four hundred thousand dollar price tag associated with it. So it's pretty important that we, we have confidence in the cost options and the path to the budget because it has real impacts to our guaranteed maximum price. If we, if we aren't able to award that contract, we now need to go find another four hundred thousand dollars in cost options and reductions to close that cap.
And then also you guys will be mobilizing in mid-March to get started.
Yeah, so um, great segue back to the my presentation. I'm sorry, I printed it sideways there. Okay, so this is our um, our, our schedule approach. Again, this is assuming an approval of guaranteed maximum price number two today. We, the McCown Gordon SBT teams would go work for the next month to come to go validate the costs that are associated with this. So I think you saw in some of the notes, there's redesign that's needed, target savings. Our teams have to go work together, get drawings updated and go get those bid and pricing updated from contractors to confirm the prices that are included in this cost option sheet. Our plan is to be back here, March twenty fourth, to present the final GMP that would be for the full amount. Assuming GMP number two is executed tonight, our crews would be able to mobilize to the site and getting set up on site. And this would include our, you know, our general presence, construction trailer, site fencing, site security and kind of all that legwork that needs to be set up before we have any other contractors show up on site. And that would generally occur in the middle of March. So feasibly before we come back for a, a final GMP. Confirmation from the earthwork guy, he is available no later than April. Ideally, he, he believes he may be able to pull that up by a week or two. We're counting on April and this would get us started on the gymnasium, seven through twelve wing. Um, and really the, the K through six wing, which would include the demolition of the common space. That was scheduled to happen after spring break. That timing is still um, still relevant. So that would take place kind of right out of the gate as well. And then we got the VOAG construction, whatever happens there taking place next summer, in summer of twenty six, excuse me. Okay, could we switch back to the GMP number two? I wanna walk through, walk the group through what's included in this.
Oh yeah, I lost, oh, there you go.
Okay, so the first three pages of the document is an amendment to the contract. And that's it. That's the technical name for it. We're amending the base contract that we already have in place. The base contract says we have a contract for zero dollars of construction cost. This is amending that contract to now be nine million eight hundred and forty eight thousand forty two dollars. And that is a sum of the, the work that was completed in last summer in GMP one, plus the current GMP number two. This section, this set of documents also includes a, a reference to a schedule. This gives us the ability to start, you're giving us notice to proceed by signing the ex- executing the amendment. And then we have a schedule attached that outlines the construction period. So as we start going through the rest of the document, we've also included the cost summary, the contract document references. I'm on down to. Yeah, keep going. Yep, cost summary, references to the contract documents. We have a few clarifications that is aligning the um, responsibility of budgets and responsibility of who is, who is responsible for the cost of things between McCown Gordon SBT and the district. And that's what is shown in the clarifications and qualifications as we continue to go on down. Yeah, go on down there, one. And, and I'm if you guys have any questions on these clarifications, please jump in. I'm gonna go to the highlights and the things that are important here. If you guys have any questions on these clarifications, please jump in, I'm gonna go to the highlights and the things that are important here. Go down to general items, number J. And K. And then this is also reflected in the exclusions on it and the reason that we have exclusions is just to clearly delineate what we what we have and what we don't have. General items J and K are are referencing any forthcoming tariffs. So as I've noted on the master budget, we currently don't have an understanding because the rules haven't been made around tariffs yet. So we're clearly stating, we don't have anything included for tariffs. If we can go contract with trade partners, especially the steel contractor, we can do our best to mitigate any future impacts of tariffs. But know that at this point, our pricing doesn't include any tariffs. If we're we're able to identify and understand what those are, those will be reconciled in GMP number four. Could you go on down to the exclusion section? Just again, we wanna be clear here on, we're we're not including any sales tax, it's a public project, those are generally. Sales tax exempt, we don't have utility fees, in other words, we're not paying directly paying Midwest Energy to put it to buy the transformer or put in the gas meter. We're gonna connect to it, but that bill will come from the district and we've accounted for that on the master budget. We're not doing design costs, we don't have. You know, obviously a fire suppression system is not included in this one, we're not doing third-party testing. That's a conflict of interest and you all wanna hold a contract to make sure that. We're installing things in a quality manner and it meets the performance requirements of the project. We don't have furniture fixtures and equipments, we're not buying desks and tables and chairs and things, we don't have building commissioning. We're, at this point, we're not anticipating moving any of the furniture from existing buildings in. Not to say we won't do it, but it's just not included in this proposal. It's kind of one of the things that we've we've. Want the group to be aware of is. Our earthwork contractor has done the best best of his ability with the information that we have, so geotech report, engineering. Documents to anticipate whatever is in the in the existing soil. If there is a situation where there is bad soil, rock under the gym that has to be removed. We don't currently have a way to quantify that and subsequently, we have not included that. That is what is what contingencies are are meant for is to account for those types of things. This is a generally accepted practice. We can change that, but just know that there is cost implications and and there you're at risk of not. Getting that money back if we ask the the earthwork contractor to go anticipate some sort of poor soil condition. He's gonna cover his risk and he's not gonna give any of that money back, so in this environment, we're saying we're gonna account for this through contingencies. And if we encounter something, we're only gonna pay him basically what he encounters and he's gotta send us time and material invoices for. We are not, we currently have not included hazardous material abatement, this is the the asbestos removal. That's being held separately and I think that's actually on one of the next agenda items for tonight. And then finally tariffs. There is an estimate summary as if we kind of keep going two pages forward, this is the breakdown in costs. And where the money is being spent between earthwork, utilities, concrete and steel. And then a breakdown of the associated. Insurances and bonds that are required to to ensure that the project is. Appropriately covered, as well as McCann Gordon's supervision fees. This is the general conditions, so this is our staff being on site and job trailer and toilets and dumpsters and those kinds of things. And that this is only associated with this scope of the work, this does anticipate that we are going to execute a GMP number four or G- final GMP. That will be forthcoming at the end of March. Okay, the remaining documents in this, and you don't have to scroll through all of them. This is a a detailed log, we are contractually bound to the documents that SBT and the team have put together. And this is what this represents, the final exhibit in here is the project schedule. And this is a detailed schedule. That outlines what work is taking place at what time and this is the roadmap for how we're gonna go execute the project. You have questions?
Well, I guess we'll find out, huh? Uh, I do have some questions, are, this one's kind of towards Greg, are all items defined that would affect? Drawing wise, the potential of the earth work or the concrete.
Yes, what happens, yes. Except for what we don't know, so what happens is.
Exception of items that are may or may not be on this list, right?
What do you mean?
Like the hallway or removal of music room, that that affects it, right? Does that affect that? This is a very question, does that affect that contractor's price?
I'm sorry, you'll have to repeat the question.
So the items that are not defined currently on the drawing. That will be defined potentially at a later date, well, hopefully at a later date. Will that affect that contractor's? Pricing?
So for instance, if you approve the concrete number tonight, that was as part of the GMP number two, right? But then at a later date, we come back and we say, uh, we make the decision, we wanna take off the music room. There would be a change to his contract, there'd be a reduction that we'd have to go back and vet that out, but there'd be a reduction in cost in that. If you wanted to add the connecting corridor piece we talked about. Yeah, we've allocated five hundred thousand dollars for that, uh, there would be some concrete that would be have to be added to his scope of work. So there's gonna be things that that happened, but that's just like every other part of this project where. You guys see the advantages of of things that are saved and and can choose to add scope if if you want to. And so, I mean, it's not really that much different than that.
Is there a change order cost associated with those changes?
As in additional fees or? So only if that contract price affects the total GMP amount. So the the fees, so McCann Gordon's overhead and profit. Is it percentage that's fixed in the in the contract? That if that number, if if our GMP amount increases. Our fee amount increases by that two point eight five percent.
Percentage, yeah.
I have a question to piggyback off that. If you. You take off the music room, so who does the arguing to say how much less concrete that is? You know, if you guys say it's fifty thousand less, but the concrete guy's only gonna say, no, it's only twenty thousand less. How does that argument take place?
Yeah, so they have to provide detailed accounting of that, especially once we have them under contract. They have to provide us with hourly rates, they have to provide us with unit costs and quantities. So when they, when we get a drawing from SBT that removes the music room. Our team will go in and do a takeoff and say there's X number lineal feet of footings that are X size. X number of square feet of slab. And we have to have that same level of detail from the from the subcontractor. To be able to validate their pricing, so we can go off on our own and go typically a concrete slab is eight dollars a square foot. If they're giving us less than that, or you know, if they come back and say, I'm giving you three dollars a square foot back, we can go reconcile that with them and say no. But that's our responsibilities to to make sure that we're getting good value on those those reductions.
And the and the thing about approving GMP number two right now is that. By the time we come back, a month from now with GMP number four, that has this vetted out. No work will have been started, or maybe that that'd be guys will mobilize. There'll only be maybe a couple of days worth of work if we get the dirt guy here earlier, so. We're just trying to provide a path to get started, but there's nothing gonna be in place that's gonna be an issue. And to circle back on, I don't wanna keep chopping off the music room and say that's. There's options there. For instance, on the, I don't know if you can see the value of that, there's there's, if you don't do the connecting link, you don't really have to do anything differently. Than we have in there for the art room right now, th- these are some things we just need to talk and have the discussion about what you guys want at the end of the day. And be able to then develop that final scope. Just doing it as an example.
Typically like to review a contract and decide, make a decision on on it. If it's presented to you.
Generally, we can do it pretty quick. Now. I I understand your point here, is you guys have had this contract for twenty-four hours.
Little more, but yeah.
Let's call it twenty-four hours. The information that's included in here is not different. It is supplementing the base contract that we have. The the clarifications and and assumptions document is outlining, and again, delineating, putting a line in the sand. Of what do we have and what what don't we have? And it's documented here clearly so that when in two years or whatever it comes back as. We all have something to look back on and go, alright, what did we say we were doing on the furniture, who's moving it? And we have a document that says, guys, we didn't anticipate that, that's the purpose of this document.
Do you think that within the next thirty days that we will have? Exactly what we're getting hammered out?
Our intention is to be back here on March twenty-fourth. With GMP number four, having all the cost options reconciled and being able to go through that list again. And making decisions on what scope is in and what scope is out.
I mean, the caveat to that is, you know, need to figure out exactly. Do you want the art room, do you want the connecting link, do you want the music room, do you wanna go some things around or? That's what we need to determine before we can actually finalize it, that if we can come to that pretty quick, then yeah.
Do you want that discussion now?
All those potential changes. That was outlined. If we agree to any of those, will it change? What's outlined in the GMP two as far as the concrete work?
Generally, aside from. Items that are removing scope, generally not. So an example is where we are removing curb and potentially removing curb and gutter from a parking lot. That would impact what this is. What what is what is somewhat missing from this discussion is what GMP number four looks like. So, I'm sorry to make you jump around whoever's driving here, but if you could go to the second page where it has that accounting. Well, stop right there, that this is a great place because. This this is essentially the document that we show the pluses and minuses. And we come back and go, okay, we took out two hundred thousand dollars out of the building concrete. You see another column where it says GMP number three or GMP number four and there's a negative two hundred thousand dollar number there. By example. And then that total, when we get to the bottom, will be the new total, which by our calculations. Is thirty-six. Thirty-six million. Five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
Well, I don't mind stating, I've already stated to you, I'm skeptical of approving a contract without having. The GP three and four, so that we know what the hundred percent cost is destined to be. I mean, we're solid calling limbo, in my judgment, but that's my opinion.
Terry, I'm with you, what's the alternative though?
Well, that's a good question.
I would say that, you know, I understand wanting to know what all the numbers are. It's not a hundred percent the nature of this process, that's more the nature of the design bid build. Where we put projects are bid out and you get one bid on 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 the bid date and you have all, you have that number. This is a much more flexible fluid process and and. What we've seen after COVID is with delays of. The way the subcontractors have been able to procure things and everything, this is a pretty standard way of moving forward on projects, I think you said seventy-five percent. Of your projects go this way, just because it's not always about the budget, sometimes it's about. You have to order things earlier on in order to get them in time, like we're doing that project in in Waukegan for the hospital. They said it was gonna take twelve months to get electrical switchgear, took fourteen months to get the electrical switchgear. So, things are changing a little bit and how we can do things and we've just had to find flexible ways to make that happen.
If 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 there's kind of two factors here that are are important and one is. That there is a feasible path to the budget. That it is, we know in in some form or fashion that we have an avenue to close a six million dollar gap, very feasibly. We also know that the consequences of delaying further have real cost impacts. And it's not just about the earthwork contractor and losing the earthwork contractor, it's about delaying the start. And if if we're not able to start earthwork in in late March, early April. The guarantee of turning over the elementary wing by August of twenty twenty-six for students to get in it, to get in it, can't, I, we can't make that. Because we we don't have enough time to get that elementary wing completed. In order to get those students out of portables and into a spot, so then then the other consequence to go with that is the additional rent on the portable classrooms. So, so again, those those are the two risk, the things that are real costs that are coming out of of. Delaying the project further and. Yeah, I I can understand the the concern, Terry. If if we did not have a robust avenue to get to the budget, we would not be, I would not be here. Advocating for this to move forward.
I realize the position you're in. But you will have the GP three and the four on the twenty-fourth of March. So we're talking about four weeks.
Correct.
And we started out initially as promoted that we have a school completed by December of twenty-five.
I I don't know that that was ever on the table, December of twenty-five.
That was a goal, that was.
That was a goal, right? And I kept asking a number of times, well, now the goal is twenty-seven.
December of twenty-six.
Now the goal to do, the same thing we talked about, is getting kids in school in August of twenty-six.
That's not the project completion, that's just kids in a school building, right?
Yeah, correct, that was always.
Okay, I think what Terry's saying is.
Yeah, well, we never said everything was gonna be complete by end of twenty-five or beginning of twenty-six.
I have the question of, and this is where I struggle, is we are at a point where. It is a tough decision, it is a tough path forward, however you look at it. And I look at this and and can't help but ask the question, and I would, I'm guessing that there's other people. That have asked this question of how would this look if this was presented? Before the bond was even done. Being at this price point or what it is at now. And I don't know as it would be moving forward at the path that we are currently. Maybe it would, maybe it wouldn't, I don't know. I struggle with that.
So what I can.
I would like, I personally would like to. Well, I'll ask this. Or make this statement that moving forward, I think it was under the impression that the. Seven through twelve portion of it would be built and completed first, I understand. The other side of that, the other perspective of that. From a cost perspective. Now, that being said. I guess I would be more accepting of this. I guess I would be more accepting of this amendment if we were to hold off on demolition of the commons area in this portion of it with the equipment. And understanding that how that, the entire project's going to affect or what we have to give up to get within budget.
So, if, if what I'm hearing is an approval of guaranteed maximum price number two would be given, but we're not starting construction on the elementary wing until we have confirmation that we are within budget.
Which, by what you're telling me is, is we wouldn't, we would be able to have that, we're not planning on starting on the, before the twenty-fourth anyway, right? We would have.
Yeah, generally.
We're gonna have that hammered out by then.
Generally, yes.
Hypothetically, right? We're not gonna start construction on any of it until that's known, right?
Yeah, generally, yes.
So, I guess that's my view where I would feel comfortable with moving forward.
Okay, and, and I, I think that is a fair ask and we can make that adjustment. Again, the, the important part is being able to write a contract and, and get a, get a date committed to our earthwork contractor. So we, we don't incur a four hundred thousand dollar cost, extra cost.
Barry, when was, when were you planning on this with the updated schedule of demoing the commons?
Yeah, I, I think it was generally within the same timeframe.
Like after March twenty-fourth?
Yeah, apologize on how that.
It was, it was around the nineteenth originally, so.
April tenth.
April tenth.
April tenth, so it'd be past.
How would you feel about that, Terry?
Hey, Matt, can you repeat that?
I guess what I'm asking to make me feel we're comfortable about it. I will say, say this much, when I sat down and went through this and looking at what we're on over budgets, I struggled really hard to approve where we're at without knowing a final cost. And we are at the point where we're able to make a significant change. But as we approve amendments and as we move forward, those decisions are going to be harder and harder. Is that a fair statement? Because things are locked in, things are committed. We have ordered metal, we've done this. I get that. It's going to be tougher to make a change. So, I guess we are, what I'm trying to say is, I'm sorry, Barry, what were you?
I, I was gonna say, just in general, not within the timeframe that we're talking about. By March twenty-fourth, generally no. The, 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 this is a risk mitigation tool to avoid spending another four hundred thousand dollars that we don't have to. And subsequently cutting four hundred thousand dollars in scope out.
And I understand locking them in. I understand that completely. So, what I'm getting at, though, is, is that by locking them in, them, that contractor in or those contractors in, I would personally feel at a better scenario if we were just to lock them in knowing that we were holding off on the demolition of the commons area and solely focusing on the seven through twelve until after the twenty-fourth, when we know the entire scope of what and how we're going to be within budget.
But what does that gain us? I'm lost on that.
Cutting the K-six.
It ca, I don't, it understands what exactly we have to cut or how it's going to be cut and how it's going to affect us.
But according to the bond, we can't cut the K-six.
I didn't say cut it.
Well, I think that's what you're trying to allude to.
What's that?
I said, I think that's what you're trying to get to.
I just wanna understand.
I just wanna understand why you want to delay it.
If something has to give, we have lost the seven through twelve, right? We don't have it. We don't have it. And we have drugged this out. We, the discussion is.
But the people have already spoken on what they want.
I understand that. And that's why I asked the question, how would this project look? If it was presented like this?
Does the GMP number two even have destruction of the commons in it?
Yes.
Yes, it does. Yes. I, I wanna, maybe I could jump in here. I'm sorry to curtail any discussion, but just as a point of clarification, within the schedule, this is showing site demolition starting March thirty-first. Demolition of the building was April tenth. So, we're gonna have clarity on what the cost impacts are on GMP four before that work shows up on site. And we'll know and be able to pull that back if we need to before we have that commitment of, you know, um, equipment on the ground and people on site.
Would that be just considered a reduction of scope if we decide not to demo it? So, I mean, where we wouldn't test it.
We still have, yeah, we still have flexibility within the contract and within our agreement with the earthwork contractor to make that change. And we know what the value of that is and we can pull that out wholesale without any issues. So we still have the flexibility to make these adjustments within the contract structure of GMP two. And we have the ability to reconcile that in GMP four.
Did we have no one on overbombed?
Yes, we did. We just haven't got to yet.
Can we go to overbombed before we make?
Yeah, absolutely. We will, yes. Did you get all that, Weiner?
No, I missed it.
I mean, for what you were asking, uh, Matt.
I got, I got Matt's response, yes. I could not understand Terry.
He was asking if we could move to allow the overbombed to happen.
Matt, you asked how, how this would look. Matt, you asked how this would look if it was presented? So I, I guess my response to that would be, we're only using funds generated from the bond question and, and what was voted on on the election day. We're not using funds for anything other than that. And yeah, is it more than that? Yes, because there are more funds generated than even originally anticipated. So is it over budget from what, was it originally budgeted? Yes, but it's also only using funds that can only be used for this project. And still giving the district a million dollars to work with for other things such as a football field, if you guys wanna choose to do that, or things you wanna add to the project. You can't use these funds for anything that's not part of that bond vote.
But is there any chance these options that you showed us, if a couple of them don't work, then where does the rest of the money come from?
Then we gotta find other ways to, to get there. Yeah. So, there, but I wouldn't say, I wouldn't say more funds are gonna be needed. It's where do we find other ways to get there?
In one of them.
Some of, some of these Xs aren't, some of these items haven't been chosen specifically because they don't wanna go there yet, but there, there's options.
If that's necessary, they, they could be on the table. And, and I, I shared this, um, earlier, but I, I wanted, these numbers are conservative. And as I've shared kinda early on, as we already know that these are, these numbers have already improved. In other words, we've already found six point three million dollars versus a six point one. And we do that intentionally, right, is we make sure that we are approaching this from a conservative manner so that it builds in flexibility. So hopefully in March, when we come back and those numbers are better, there's some of those things that we don't have to make a difficult decision on. And maybe the savings is greater than we expected and we can not have to make a decision around, um, something.
Is everybody good if we move those in form?
Uh, before we move over, I'm gonna like to make a motion, take a five minute break.
Yeah, maybe ten minutes.
Can we do ten? Can we do ten? Ten minutes?
Ten minute break.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion for a ten minute break. All those in favor?
Aye. Just late.
Alright, everybody's ready we'll go ahead and get back to regular session. Uh first thing we'll start with is the open forum. Uh just remind you it is a list that you had to sign up for. Um I'll call out your name you'll have three minutes to speak your piece. Uh first up is Dale like you.
Okay, you want me to come up prior?
Yeah, that'd be good, that'd be good.
I can do it from here, but.
That way you can speak in the microphone a little bit.
Okay.
Have a couple of questions I'm gonna start out with Barry. Uh you're talking about not being responsible for the geologic conditions as McCallum Gordon. I I understand that, okay? But there was a geology report, uh is my understanding. And so the foundation people should have looked at that hopefully look at it and and designed according. So is it McCallum Gordon's uh responsibility to check with your designers to make sure they use that information? Do you do that has that been done?
Probably a fair question for me.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Okay.
Kind of two part.
Okay.
Well.
You go first and I'll finish it up.
And if you're probably familiar, the way we do geotechnical reports is we pick several boring locations and they take borings at those locations. But they might be fifty feet apart sixty feet apart. So what Barry was talking about, we don't know, the unknowns is if we find a soft spot in an area that we don't have a boring location, that's what we can't foresee and that's what the this uh earthwork guy is excluded. And we find that what happens is that we come back and we have a a geotech engineer come back and make sure the soil meets the varying capacity of the uh report that that is needed and that the structural foundations have been designed to. And if there's a part that doesn't meet that, then it has to be recompacted uh so that it does meet that. And that's the part that's excluded because you just can't know. But we could take if we took borings every ten or twelve feet, maybe we'd hit everything, but that's that costs more money.
Yeah, there's there's a limit to the exploration of the process, but when you say when you say the geotech people come back, do they look at that during the excavation?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's good, so then if we have a problem, then work out a way to solve that or redesign the.
And that's why they're saying it's excluded.
Be the least desirable.
Right.
Okay, alright, well, I just hope I've been around a couple of projects in my prior life where the piling elevations didn't end up at the elevations at the G-Tech. And that was a three million dollar deal.
We don't have pilings here, so hopefully, I said, we won't have pilings here, so.
No, no, but it's still found.
And we we worked a lot with the engineer to uh and the uh um and the geotech to make sure, because originally the geotech guy came back and said the soils didn't have very get very capacity. We hadn't come back in and worked our engineer to make sure that they weren't being overly conservative and that that we were all in good shape.
Okay, that's good to know. So I think this is an expression for you, Gary. Uh how many how many square feet are in the building as it states stands now? The the design's done is what I understand the structure, you know, the square footage.
Yeah.
How much is it?
I think it's about ninety thousand, is that accurate? I can't remember exactly off the top of my head.
Well, so.
Dale, I'll let him finish her answer, but the time is up here, so.
Okay, I'll catch you outside.
Okay.
I'm ready to get home as soon as I can, catch my beauty sleep. Okay, next up Corey Castens.
I just have a quick question for the board, say this construction draws out for a couple of years. Do we have money set aside for the rent of what we're in now? The modulars, because doesn't the insurance run out the end of twenty five?
It runs out in May of twenty six. Um so we do have my funds and capital outweigh to account for it. Where we we won't necessarily run out as we get there, where we're gonna run out is when they have to go, when they get taken back. There's a disconnect fee to that and our our limit for our insurance policy is is two million dollars. And and it's I'm anticipating about two to four hundred thousand dollars, just depending on when they go away and things like that.
That's what we'll probably have to pay until we're done using them?
Uh it would be more like the disconnect fees, but yeah, that's what.
That's all.
Good, alright. Next, we'll have Dave Kane.
First question, when we first talked, um I was asking about third party oversight and I see in the presentation that it's not included. Is the board wanna be doing the third party oversight of this? You know, in other words, testing A S T M testing in the concrete, that kind of stuff, steel, et cetera.
There's different types of third party testing and so for instance, uh you guys have the concrete testing in yours?
No, all all of that.
Well, just tell me some of these.
All third party tests carried in a master budget under the districts. We've gone and procured.
But it's gonna happen.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Um second thing, since I only got three minutes, um these changes that we're doing, are we considering um like if we switch to a company that may be out in Germany that we can't get replacement parts for some of the uh um mechanical equipment? Um are we considering like we take off that flying roof, there had to be a reason for putting it up there? Are those, I mean, or or were we just wasting our money originally?
So that is one of the concerns, for instance, I'll give you an example of the the Z E P panels, the Z E P metal panels. Um and one concern I have there is that, yeah, I told you earlier that Jeff, his name's not quite right, but Jeff Z E P is Vice President of Dry Design, Jason Z E Pland created created Z E P panels. Well, Dry Design is suing um Z E P panels right now for copyright infringement. So I'm not sure that that's the direction we wanna go, because if they go away, we don't have any place to go back to, so yeah, we're are looking at things like that.
And and long term maintenance costs and things.
And that's why we want Dyken or Aon, those are two fantastic uh matrix C groups.
Um, let's see. Got that one. Okay, so when and it kind of goes with what Matt said. Um when this was presented and I was all for it, it was for X number of dollars, we're gonna hire a construction manager and they're gonna provide us a product for X number of dollars and it's gonna look like this and um any cost overages, the construction manager absorbs. Now, what we're being, that's what was presented or it's what I understood was presented. So now we're taking it back to kind of a different thing to where every little step, we're saying, oh, the, you know, what the cost is. But um it's it seems like it's on us to cut our scope back to match the cost overruns rather than, you know, this was a guaranteed thing and this is the product you're gonna get and that's not what we're getting, in my view, anyway.
Yeah, so the the guaranteed maximum price is, you want me to go and answer that?
Yeah, go ahead and answer everybody.
So the the guaranteed maximum price that that you're referencing is is once the guaranteed maximum price amendment is established. So this would take place, those cost overruns that you're referencing would be taking place during construction of it, not leading up to from a conceptual basis to through design. Now, what we're, we understand that the district has a budget and that's our goal is to help get the project to a budget so that the guaranteed maximum price can be honored and can be counted on.
And and I guess to add to that, what we find, I for instance, on this is, you know, the audio visual and low voltage and uh cameras came in double what we thought we probably would design that, that's not really on them to uh to have to eat that. Uh we have to get our design in line with really what it should have been in the first place. And so I don't think we're asking, we're saying you're not going to get anything that you were expecting. Uh there's some things we probably pushed the limit too far on and and need to dial back a little bit.
Yeah, in future, though, um from from the perspective I have, it's not what was sold to us when we went up from our X on the ballot. It just, it's it's not from my perspective, so.
So I guess the the thing I would add to that is kind of what I said earlier that, you know, when when you're doing a bond issue and you're talking about uh setting a dollar amount for a bond issue, there are other funds that become available. Like what you see, part of what has been added to this is that uh was called bond premium. So if when you sell the bonds, uh some of those bonds are paid for in cash, you get extra dollars that come into the project. And all those dollars can only be spent on this project, they can't be allocated towards capital outlay or they can't spend the money at the elementary. Uh well, they can't spend the money on things that weren't part of that bond question. So there are other funds that can have come available, so we're still doing the project for the same funds. We're not asking this the school district to say, hey, we need X amount of capital outlay funds in order to beat our budget. If you get this project in budget, there's funds that are only allocated for this project. I I understand what you're from where you're coming from and you, because you don't, you don't know what those dollars are gonna be until they sell the bond three months after the bond passes, so it's hard to, it's hard to articulate that. Because you just don't know.
Increase clarity was what I asked for.
Alright, thanks Dave, uh we'll go to Mitch Mines.
Yeah, I I was on the yes committee and uh.
Mitch, can you step up here just so the guys online can hear you too, sorry.
Yeah, I was on the yes committee with a lot of a lot of folks and uh was really excited about this project. And we were told a lot of things, you know, that we told a lot of people to get votes. We worked hard and we did a great job. So me, you know, looking at the voting, there's about thirty thirty to thirty five percent of people that did not want this at all. Uh there's probably, in my opinion, thirty percent of the people that wanted it really nice. There was probably the rest of people that just wanted a new school, didn't really care. I was on the top end of that and and at the upper, upper top of that, I wanted a really nice school. Okay, I worked at Colby High School for several years, that's not a nice school, it's new, it's not nice. Right, I don't, I didn't want that in in this community, I did not want that. And I mean, I I get it, we get, I don't know if we're stuck in this situation. But if if we had, if we're not having our new wrestling room, if we're spending forty million dollars and not getting a wrestling room, I would not have been on the yes committee. I would not have been on the yes committee if there's no seating in the cafeteria. I would not have been on the yes committee if there's no pavement in the parking lots. I mean, I would not have been, I mean, I'm and now, and so, but I want a nice school. I don't want a half ass school and so, because I'm on that end of it. But and so I I don't know, like, I'd like to know, like, what are some options to? If if we're stuck here and it's just cut, 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 or is is there a way to raise more money? Is there a way, is there another, can we do another bond, can we do, what are some options, I guess, that's my question.
So my answer to that would be, I am very confident you're gonna come walk into this place and you're gonna think it's a very nice school. Some of the part of the process of this is we do have some things on the wish list and that will be brought back in later and some of the things that you're gonna wanna see, I think, and hopefully we can get most of those back. Uh this, yeah. I I really believe that we'll get a lot of it back, we'll just have to see how it all comes out in the end, that uh I think we'll have a very nice school at the end of the day.
Good, took our time. Alright, thanks Mitch. And that concludes this portion of the open forum. So we will move on, um next up is approval of G M P two. Do I have any motions for the approval of G M P two?
I guess I have a question before we go anywhere. Matt, I appreciate everything that you do as far as your knowledge on the construction and stuff on this, with this being the concrete thing. I do feel as if you have a bid in on the concrete on this one, it should pay to not be.
I can step out of it, I don't mind that at all.
That's the only thing I have. I appreciate that, thank you.
Are you guys taking to a vote, do I need to leave now, is there any more discussion?
That's all the district thing I have.
Any vote? For approval of G M P two?
And this is as it was written, we we haven't taken off any, anything, right?
Correct.
As in as demolition of the of the trees.
Yeah. But that's gonna happen afterwards then. Uh I would make a motion that we approve uh scope of G M P two as written.
There's a motion, Tim McPhee made, Amber second, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, raise your hand, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Need motion carries? Do you have no vote?
No vote.
Okay. Fair enough. Next up, is that all we have for these guys there?
They were gonna help me with the.
Yeah.
The next one?
Yeah.
Okay, so up next, we have, we have an approval of a contract with I S I Environmental for asbestos removal in the gym section of the junior senior high.
Alright, um so, um Paradigm Group, if you're, I don't remember what month, but sometime in this journey, we we approved them to help us get bids for.
It was, it was probably last.
April, March, yeah. Probably when we had the demo, probably around then there.
Yeah, because they they came in and take took a bunch of samples to see what environment issues we may have in that existing gymnasium, so.
Um so they they put together um a scope, um so um with that, their bid, um or we had three, three companies who bid on it, Paradigm sent it out for bids, we had three companies who bid on it. Um the obvious lowest one is I S I Environmental at twenty three thousand six sixty five. Now, there are are two alternates um for that and that's uh remove, the alternate one is remove glass block, asbestos glazing and caulking and board up to openings in the upper southeast gym. And then alternate two is upper gym walls, remove wall wall tile and asbestos glue plugs for three hundred and thirty square foot. Um with those two alternates, the total would be twenty six eight twenty five twenty. Um so just uh um talking with um Zach from it from McCall Gordon and um the parent and Darren is his name from Paradigm Group. Um these prices here are if um they find additional um asbestos basically, and so, um let me see here, let me try to make this bigger. So that's the price per square foot and then um the price for mobilization, I I understood it that the mobilization was included in the initial prices if they have to come back is what what that's there for.
Correct.
So um I would recommend that we approve I S I Environmental um with the base bid and you guys and the two alternates, okay. Um with the base bid and you guys and the two alternates, okay. Alright, and and the two alternates for twenty-six thousand eight twenty-five twenty.
This is something you guys have solicited?
No, this is, that Paradigm Group.
Yeah, we facilitated it, but yeah, we're not able to hold that contract, so.
So these bids are just, you have, haven't seen them or?
We have.
They helped.
Zach puts maybe this matrix.
What's the big discrepancy in why one half the price?
So B and R is out of Kansas City. ISI is out of Wichita. Um so ISI is closer. Uh ACM removal, I'm not entirely sure where they're out of. We, we tend to see ISI being more cost effective kind of in general. So not totally surprised by their low cost. There's, you know, there's not a ton of asbestos on this, so. That one generally is in alignment with what we would expect to see. And there, there were funds carried in the master budget for this removal. It is.
On the gym, I realize the west classrooms are gonna be covered under. The renovation and remodeling, but what's to be removed in the gym? And any contamination in the roof, who's gonna do the repairs?
Okay, so I can take that. So alternate one, this is the glass block. So when we, on the north wall of the gym, I believe it's the north wall. Um when we put the new seven through twelve building up against that gym, those glass windows are now covered. So this would be to remove those glass block windows and all the caulking associated with it. And then our construction cost infills those and covers them up.
So all you're indicating that that's all that's gonna be uh pulled out in the gym?
Well, so on the west wall of the gym, so on the balcony, the upper balcony, where we connect. So that that balcony now is, is a, basically a corridor that connects the K through six to the seven through twelve, through that balcony. And on each end of it, there are glue, there's those square tiles that have the glue pucks behind them. That's what alternate two, alternate two is. Is to remove those, those sections, so that when we go make the connection into the building, that's clear of asbestos.
Alright, so. If you hook up all the fixtures in the gym. Then any, any damage due to remodeling, I mean due to the hazards and materials, then.
We're, we're coming back and putting new work in place. Correct. Yep. So uh Paradigm has overlaid, you know, built their, their quantities and plan. Based on the construction documents. So they've made sure that that was aligned, so that we didn't have these guys take out stuff that we don't need to. Or that isn't gonna be repaired in the new construction.
Did you say you were taking out uh block windows?
This glass block.
Is it necessary to take them out or just?
Um there, there's nothing, you know, you're gonna have a unfinished side of a building, so it's.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that that's the purpose, it's just for the look, needs to be covered.
You don't wanna hangover.
If you don't take them out, it's gonna look like the Southside did with that addition.
We're trying to save money.
I, at this point, I would accept it and if we need to re- revisit that with them, based on cost options, we can, we can revisit that with them. But that would be uh my recommendation.
Fair enough. Any other questions on this contract? I think it's contracted there. Abatement form? Technically no.
Could somebody ask uh if that includes the current sample?
The air sample? Clearance sampler. They're, they're required to do that when they're complete. Especially in a K twelve facility. Yep.
Alright, is there a motion to be presented to accept the contract with ISI Environmental for asbestos removal?
I'll make a motion to accept the contract with ISI for abatement of the asbestos.
I'll second that. So, Winter made the motion, Jordan seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright. Motion carries.
No, I abstained from voting.
Alright.
Okay, is something you thought is it, we're good, because you've had.
Thank you guys.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you guys.
Yes, guys.
Have a safe drive home. Can't wait to see you again.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, Kevin. Alright, we should move on to administrative reports.
Alright, um I figured this would take a while, so I, I just thought I'd share the. Um kind of legislative things that have been happening. Um so. Um HB two-one-one? Yeah, I, this is big on my screen and not. Oh, I, I did make copies of this, so. Anyways, HB House Bill twenty-eleven, decreasing the rate of now. Adblocking tax imposed by school district. I believe that has to do with um, there's been a lot of talk of. Um for the general fund, it's twenty mils of the district has to, to um impose. And then it would be just decreasing it, I believe, to eighteen point five mils. Um. Uh the, the safe required to make up the difference, so there is that. Um. House Bill twenty thirty-three, that includes programs and services um by nonprofit organizations. Um agreed by this as approved at-risk educational programs. Um I don't know the full extent of this, so I need to keep my, probably my mouth shut, but I'm guessing that a legislator or group has a. Update that they would like school to use, schools to use, so they would have approved to be on that risk program list. Um let's, let's see here, House Bill twenty-one oh three. Um includes participation in certain learning experiences and agricultural activities as a valid excuse for absence from school. And authorizing um um school boards to, to make schools. Make rules there af, therefor. Um I don't have honestly any problem if it's a educationally based thing. I'm afraid that it's, they're trying to open it up to where kids are absent, there's, they're needed to work on the farm. So I would be, where, I guess I'd be concerned about that, if that's what that's going for.
Working cows.
Um HB twenty-one twenty-nine, transferring teachers from Capers three cash balance plan to Capers two. That would be incredible for um for teachers. Um. I, I, I'm one, I'm already like on Capers two, but I started right after and not too long, probably within five years. Anybody who was hired after that has moved to Capers three and um that's not a good plan. It's not, I mean, it's not a good retirement plan. Unfortunately, they, they only have teachers on there. They don't have. Like other school employees, like it's even questionable like principals or, or counselors or. You know, things like I, so that's kind of something that they've been working on. House Bill twenty-one thirty-six is basically for vouchers. Um. So, um that's, it just keeps, they basically keep adding a little bit to the program to. Move to full vouchers. This is the next step on it. Um HB twenty-one thirty-seven. Um the contract with a private vendor to stall, operate and maintain school bus cameras. I don't have a. Um a lot, I need to learn more about that one. Um. House Bill twenty-one thirty-nine, this is an interesting one. It um increasing the minimum expenditure. Expenditure amount to school districts for contracted goods. So if we have a. Basically a bid that's over twenty thousand, then we have, like, we're required by law to bring it to the board. They have to bid it out and this moves it to fifty thousand dollars. I almost think that already failed in the committee, so um. Um House Bill twenty-one ninety-four, that's a providing a capers working retirement exemption. I think this would help when we have um someone who's retired through capers, but they're still wanting to work. And so there, there's some, there's some laws that we have to deal with when we go through that. Um. Let's see here. House Bill twenty-two twenty ninety-nine, I don't know much about that one. Um. House Bill twenty-three twenty, it's authorizing children in the custody of the. Department for Children and Family, so I'm one of foster care to be transferred. Um. It's requiring records for such students to be timed out to ten school in any school district. And then requiring those records and, so I don't, I don't know how that one would work. Sen- uh Senate, um valid, Senate Bill two is validating the election results for the bond issue questions for Greeley County. Um that hit in August. Um I don't, if you haven't followed it, basically. You're supposed to put the que, the county is supposed to put the question on the county website. Their county doesn't have a. Um website and so the um Attorney General invalidated their election. I will say that I believe, I know our bond election has gone through it, like, everything I've heard is working with ours, so. Um that's not an issue for us. Um but they're trying to get the law to allow the Greeley County one to move forward. Um and that was actually put into a law, actually just a couple of years ago, is the first time it was really tested. From what I understand. Hopefully they can get that changed, so they can move forward with their project, cause I know they're, they're kind of in flux with their. With theirs. Senate Bill forty-seven, um this is one that affects you guys, all uh the board members. And basically requires a school district to publicly na, list the names and email addresses of current board members. So I believe we do, right? Yeah. Um authorize local school board members. To add new items to board meeting discussions, ask questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. And access school property, authorizing members of the public to address school boards at board meetings. And authorizing payment of annual dues to any non, not-for-profit organization that. Provide services to member school districts. Um SB forty-eight, um. It requires school districts to demonstrate improvement in academic performance. And be in compliance with all state statutes and rules and regulations to achieve or maintain accreditation. Um. So SB forty-nine, this is another one that comes to you guys. You know the need assessment that we do every year with the budget? It would require you guys to do it. And so we put it together and we go through it.
I'm kinda needy.
Yeah, so, um. So, um anyways, that just. Well, I guess they authorized you guys to pay yourselves, so.
Buy dinner.
So I guess that's where that would come in.
Compromised.
Um. And that has something to do with the Open Meeting Act. Um. So I think Senate Bill seventy-five is another voucher bill. Um. Senate Bill seventy-six, um. This is requiring school employees and um post-secondary educational institutions to use the name and pronouns. Consistent with a student's biological sex and birth certificate and authorize their cause of action for violations therefore. There's another bill, I don't know if it's the Senate or that it had to do with gender-affirming care or something that. Um the governor vetoed and that one of them, the House or the Senate, over that vetoed today, if I remember right. Um that, that's kind of interesting. And then um Senate Bill eighty-seven. Um that's another voucher one, so that's, that's alive as well. Um that was really all I had for today. Want me to go?
Sure.
There you go.
So this week has, this week has been FFA day, since we've only had one day of school. Um they did a breakfast Monday, they served breakfast burritos. Um I know they're gonna have dodgeball. Can't remember what day that was gonna be, so maybe we'll have FFA two weeks, maybe we'll do some of that stuff next week. Like tomorrow's Cowboys. Yeah, we'll workout perfect, next couple of days, next week's short. Cowboys and Cowgirls is tomorrow, I'm not sure it's Friday, but um.
Pajamas.
Is it?
Yeah, it's like something like farmers taking the day off.
Um we just finished up our CAC Valentinograms on Friday. Um which is always a big undertaking, they, between here and both schools. So um they pass out a lot of goodies, so the kids really like that. Um. Girls' regional wrestling was last Friday in Russell. Um Maggie Holly is, are women girl wrestler place first. She'll be in state um two weeks from now, the twenty-eighth and ninth, is that right? Yeah. Yeah, that, that too.
Last year's league.
Yeah, yeah. Um I, I believe we have eight boys wrestling tomorrow, not tomorrow, Friday, Saturday, excuse me, in Simiron. Uh uh originals. Um junior high league wrestling is tomorrow in St. Francis. So um basketball senior night is tomorrow night. Um was Tuesday, we scheduled the Monday, now we scheduled to tomorrow, so. Lots of fun there. Um and then substate basketball starts next week and I think that's in Dallas, I think. Um and then also have junior high music festival next Wednesday in Colby. Anybody wants to go check that out? So, yeah, this is Shrelly there. I might be there too. Um I think that's it. I'm sure I'm missing some stuff, but. Yeah?
Um I'll start with Kansas State, Deb Porty was here, I think with Farm Bureau, right? And she did a presentation for kindergarten through fourth grade, fifth grade? Uh um Mr. Seiger's gonna have the Northwest Kansas Educational Service will be in observing his class on Friday for most of the day. Um they've kind of heard some of his different character that he does and so there, there's new um PE. Standards and so with like emotional well-being and character development, so they're, they're gonna come check, check out a class. Uh fifth grade started planning their field trip for the Denver Museum of Nature and Science. Um and they just began their unit on earth systems and learning about the colonies. Sixth grade is working on body systems. Sixth grade is working on body systems, they'll be building interactive three D models, you know, do you want to explain that? Do you, Jin, three D models of? Yes, how are they? How are they thinking them?
I don't know, yes.
Alright, and then they just finished ancient China and they're moving into ancient India. Fourth grade went to the Shrine Circus last Friday in Salina, and that was sponsored by several local businesses. And that's all coordinated by our local Shriners and Masons, and they donated. All sorts of different things towards that, so that was, the kids loved it, um it was, it was a good trip, so. Um also on Friday last week, we had Donuts with Grown Ups, TTO sponsored that, we had um nineteen dozen donuts. That were given out that that morning, so we switched it up a little bit, we had to use the. Um library and the art room, the gym was full of wrestling mats, we didn't think we wanted to put kids on wrestling mats with donuts. I don't know, so we went ahead and split it up, so it was a little bit different this year, but we made it work. Um currently, the first grade heater in Mrs. McQuitty's room is not working. Um I did have that it was working because there was a part ordered and it was fixed on Monday, but it's currently. Fifty nine degrees, so Rob is aware and he is trying to get something figured out for tomorrow. Um kindergarten's update is that they have influence A. All sorts of influence A, so good times. Um and we have been doing a school-wide read with Mr. Popper's Penguins, and so if you look around you. Each family was asked to make a rookery, which is like basically a penguin's nest. And uh so they've, and they collect different things, and so each rookery is a little bit different. Um and so some of the siblings had to come together and decide what their referring is gonna be, so I think that was kind of exciting, but. Um we were set to have the movie tomorrow night, but with basketball getting put there instead. We have rearranged until next week, so we will be doing that, and I think the Masons gave. Donation for all those books that were purchased and given to each family, so. Wash your hands, I'm gonna leave.
We're down under fifty percent.
Yeah, implement the A? I'd like to like sit in there for a little bit and it takes a week to get rid of it, it's rough.
All done?
Done. So I got the rookery to free you.
I learned something, I'm like, just tie my rope, what is that?
It's a penguin neck.
That was one I didn't know.
Alright, let's move on. Non-elected personnel, we need executive session. Ten minutes, board nine men, do not have a motion.
I'm gonna go into executive session, non-elected personnel for ten minutes, board nine men.
Tim with the motion, Amber seconded, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries.
Will that video? Yeah, could Megan and Weiner, can you guys? Megan, maybe could she call Amber, and then Weiner, would you just call me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I can do that.
Alright, thank you.